Are you ready, Vene?
Yes, I am.
Okay, stand by. Five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the September 3, 2024, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Veneeth Hemavathie. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zwirko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Yes, here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the post agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. No one online? Nope, okay, great. All right, we will now begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Well, we are going to start today's meeting with a presentation from the PVPC, and I want to thank members of the Energy and Sustainability Committee for joining us for that presentation. So, looks like you all have a quorum, so if you all want to open up your meeting, I'll give you guys a moment to do so.
Why the nice turnout from the Energy and Sustainability Committee to help?
Hi, Andrea Chason, Chair of the Energy and Sustainability Committee. My address is 236 Crossview Circle, and we have quite a nice turnout, and I think, should we have everybody introduce themselves?
Well, I think you may need to, someone may need to make a motion to open up your meeting, and then you can take roll call, and then we can proceed.
I shall move.
They could just do hand votes since they're all in person.
Okay, great.
So, I mean, I don't... Greg, Greg Link, Gary Levine, Doug Taylor, Bryant Miller. I think we're only missing two people.
Okay, great. All right, so, the Select Board and the Energy Sustainability Committee are meeting together tonight to receive a presentation from Mimi Kaplan, who's the Senior Land Use and Environmental Planner with the PVPC, and the objective of this presentation is to do a reduction scoping of greenhouse gas emissions. And this process, which we're starting tonight, will hopefully lead to a place where we have a plan where we can apply for grants to actually put some of these recommendations into action and actually, you know, start reducing greenhouse gases in Long Meadow. So, I believe, are you Mimi? Okay, hi, Mimi. I'm surprised I thought you were joining us by Zoom.
Originally, I may have talked about doing that, but I was in the office in Springfield, so I figured it'd come in person.
Oh, okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. So, yeah, so I'll turn it over to you to begin the presentation.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm happy to be here, happy to be doing this process with Long Meadow. So, we did receive funding from Department of Energy Resources to assist the town with this, so, you can go to the next slide. And so, it's, regional energy planning assistance is what we get from DOER, and we get it every two years. So, we have funding, it just took a while to get it and get every, you know, work everything out and be able to meet. So, we have until the end of May to do this process, to finish this process. So, DOER provided funding for communities to prepare for the development of this community-wide greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan. So, you're familiar with green communities, I assume, the program that you're already involved in, which focuses on reducing energy use and greenhouse gas emissions from municipal facilities, but this is looking at the entire community. So, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions community-wide while also, this is DOER's language, so, while also addressing environmental injustice and empowering community-driven solutions. So, the planning includes preliminary scoping work. So, they didn't give us funding to do an entire plan, it's just scoping it. And that's also supposed to include stakeholder engagement, community workshops, and then the drafting of the scope of this full plan. As I said, we just need to expend all the funding by the end of May, and deliverables or the scope of work for the full plan. I had set outreach and engagement materials. I don't know if I have enough hours for that, because I think at this point I'm down to only about 20 hours remaining, so it kind of depends on how you want me to use those hours. So, you can go to the next slide. And I don't know if everybody saw, saw this greenhouse gas inventory that was developed a year ago, a little over, it was more like a year and a half ago, so we contracted, so for the last round of this planning assistance from DOER, they were funding greenhouse gas emission inventories, which Long Meadow signed up for, and we contracted with Clean Energy Extension at UMass, and they were the ones that developed this inventory that went through a variety of kinds of data to assess how much greenhouse gas emissions were being emitted from, well, just from electricity, building, heating, fuels, and transportation. So, a bigger plan would also, like a state plan, the state plan encompasses waste, sewage, things like that. They didn't include that probably because it's a very, very small percentage, but also they had trouble getting the data, you know, for this kind of small of a project. So, I plan on just kind of covering the highlights of the inventory for this, if that's okay. I mean, if you've all already looked over it, and that's not necessary, I won't, but, yeah, it's a few minutes, so I figured. Because it's, you know, it's the starting point for looking at, okay, well, if you want to reduce your emissions, you need to know where you're starting from. She wasn't able, Zar Dowling at Clean Energy Extension, she wasn't able to get access all the data. You'll see she was missing some for transportation. But, so, as you can see up there, the greenhouse gas emissions by source looked at electricity, building, heating, fuels, transportation, in both the residential, municipal, and commercial sectors. And if you look over on the right, 34% of emissions were from transportation in Long Meadow, 40% from electricity use, and 26% from building, heating, fuels. And then I also broke it down by sector, so about 73% of emissions are coming from the residential sector, 24-ish percent from the commercial sector, and 2.7% from the municipal sector. So, obviously, the majority from the residential, although commercials, you know, almost a quarter. So, next slide, and feel free to, I mean, I guess, feel free to interrupt with questions if that's allowed, otherwise you can ask them at the end. So, this breaks, this, this slide and this page on the inventory breaks down the heating fuel piece, the heating fuel emissions, looking at residential, 81% of the emissions are from the use of natural gas. And again, this is, so this is from 2020 census data as well. She looked at both census data and assessor's data. They do vary a little bit. Assessor's data, I think, will not, unless it's a primary heating source, they will not record that data, and I think that accounts for some of the discrepancy. But 81% natural gas, 13% of emissions from heating oil, 5% from electricity, 1% from wood and propane. Of course, that was four years ago. I would assume it's changed a fair amount, possibly at this point. I don't know how many heat pumps have been installed in the last four years, but my guess is the use of electricity would have gone up as a heat source, and gas or oil would have, would have gone down. We won't know until you do a follow-up inventory. And it looks like from 2015 to 2020, emissions didn't really decrease very much for heating. So, small amount. So, going to the next page, next slide, this one looks at electricity emissions and then transportation emissions. So, you did have a pretty substantial decrease in emissions from electricity use. There was some, so, I didn't fully, I'll be honest, I didn't fully understand this. If you include behind the meter solar generation, it actually decreases the amount of emissions. She explained it, I don't fully understand it, so we're going to go with that. So, including that, the decrease in emissions in electricity use was almost 19%, which was due to increases in efficiency due to, you know, probably a lot of mass save, using a lot of mass save programs, weatherization, those kinds of things, decreased usage, as well as probably increased use of renewables. So, people putting solar on their homes. And then transportation was where we have this gap. So, she has emissions from 2015 based on an average of vehicle miles traveled. This is all from mass DOT data, and an average fuel efficiency of 20.8 miles per gallon, but she was not, at the time she did this, able to get data for 2020. So, unfortunately, that's kind of a big gap. I would assume that efficiency has gone up, but the vehicle mile travels may have decreased due to COVID and more people working remotely, but it'd be very interesting to do this again and find out, get that data. So, then, the rest of the inventory went on to make a number of recommendations, and these are general recommendations, strategies, actions, whatever you want to call them, that you'll see in most climate action plans or net zero plans. Things to reduce emissions from buildings, promote increased levels of residential weatherization, even though I'm sure there's been a lot already, more could be done. Implementing more energy conservation measures in municipal buildings, so keep applying for competitive grants through green communities and other types of grants. Promote transitioning to air and ground source heat pumps from oil and gas, and that would be for all buildings, you know, for residential as well as municipal, and, you know, there's more and more incentives out there for commercial as well. And conducting public outreach campaigns that would include information about benefits and incentives for all these, which I know you have this amazing Energy Sustainability Committee that already does a lot of this. So, I guess the big question will be what more can be done? So, next slide, reducing emissions in the transportation sector, this gets a little trickier because it involves EVs, which I know are not, we're not in a perfect place with them. But recommendations or strategies, actions would be to install more EV chargers on municipal property, if possible, hopefully more commercial chargers, increasing EVs in the municipal fleet. And when you think about EVs, you could also think of plug-in hybrids as well, because there's a lot of those available, and they have really good efficiency, even if they're not EVs. Promoting EVs to residents and educating about incentives and promoting use of bikes in public transportation. Next slide. Recommendations for reducing emissions and increasing the use and production of clean energy, installing more solar arrays. I assume you probably have some already? I'm actually not familiar with that. Solar arrays on municipal buildings and property, promoting more residential solar and storage. And I don't know where the town is at with municipal aggregation program, if that's in the works, or it's already? Okay. So, there is possibly over time of increasing the percentage of renewables in the aggregation energy supply. So, the next slide, thinking about what are priorities? What would you want to include in this reduction plan and eventually in your climate action plan? What are town leadership goals and priorities for emissions reductions? What are community priorities? That's the idea of doing the outreach, getting public input. What are realistic goals and timelines for these reductions? What are most feasible areas to focus on? And then, I guess I'm wondering how will this process coordinate with the efforts to develop a climate action plan, which I know is a goal of your resilient master plan? And I know that you want this to kind of build into that in some ways. So, next slide. So, thinking about engagement, you know, the DOER talks about partnering with stakeholders, which obviously we have the Sustainability Committee. I mean, I don't know if there's other organizations, as well as schools, businesses, that would be stakeholders. You know, there's all possible, you know, number of possibilities for engagement, disseminating a survey, developing outreach material, holding stakeholder engagement meetings, community-wide meetings, you know, we're kind of past, I don't know if there is any townwide events where we may have missed an opportunity to do some kind of outreach, or there might still be opportunities in the fall for doing some kind of outreach. And I know you're already doing a lot of engagement around sustainability. So, next slide. So, coordinating the rest of this process, next steps, just looking at roles and responsibilities. So, we can assist with any type of planning and facilitating of stakeholder and community engagement, and then the main task for us, for me, would be developing the scope for the plan, and if time, you know, helping to develop any type of materials for outreach. And then, for the town, clarifying the goals, priorities, and strategies for emissions reduction through your own process and through engagement, and then reviewing the draft scope of the plan, and then setting timelines for these. So, and then the last slide, I just had some resources. I imagine that you've already seen a number of net zero slash climate action plans. I just linked to some that I've used. I, last year, developed a template for greenhouse gas emission reduction plan that was based on the city of Melrose's plan, because they worked with MEPC, as did Arlington, and I liked their plan. I mean, locally, East Hampton's just finished one. I mean, there's a lot that you could use as models, so I'll just leave it there.
Thank you so much, and I think this is a great starting place and a good kickoff, and I know that the next meeting in, you know, I think maybe later September or in October, you'll be meeting with the Energy Sustainability Committee, so...
Yeah, we haven't set that meeting yet, right? I don't know, well, we can talk about that.
Yeah, y'all. So, I know that, you know, you all will get a chance to engage with Ms. Kaplan more. So, I wanted to first ask the Select Board if you all had any questions, comments, or anything, since this is kind of our opportunity to ask questions, make comments? Go ahead, Josh.
On the EV slide, in theory, I agree with us, putting in more chargers. We have a terrible problem with our rate in town. We can't make it cheap enough to, for people to want to use it.
Yeah, Corinne's mentioned that.
Yeah, and does the PVCP, you know, PVPC have any inroads with the state or with Eversource or with any of the energy bodies that could help get a better rate or facilitate a way to have a way for towns to be able to get a different rate for that?
I mean, I did see that Eversource has some type of plan that I think you can sign up to, I sign up for that, where you can have a lower rate?
If you have any information on that, please send it, because we, I've been working on this for years, and Eversource is terrible to deal with, and they don't explain anything. And, yeah, so if you have an in, and maybe the person, the right person to talk to, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, Josh, just to that end, there was a great article in yesterday's Boston Globe that, I think it was yesterday, it might have been Sunday, that they took two electric vehicles around Massachusetts.
To buy ice cream, yeah.
To buy ice cream, right, that was the article. But they also talked about what it costs to charge the electric vehicles, and they were kind of like Long Meadow, they were very, very expensive to charge at municipal charging facilities, and so it's...
Yeah, it's really hard, because the state's pushing EVs so much, and they're just behind, you know, it's an imperfect system.
But the D P U C hasn't come up with the right, if you will, tariff for the electric companies for charging, which is part of the problem.
Greg, did I see you?
So, I think, I think one of the things that's happening over here is that we also have a lot of questions. We were invited to this, to join you in this, and we want to kind of pull together what we're doing, how this will help and support the things that we're already doing. We're excited about developing a climate action plan. We're excited about developing a climate action plan. I think, um, if it's possible, I already see hands coming up from the committee.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that the select board, this is the only opportunity for the select board to ask questions. I want to give them a chance first, but of course, we still have plenty of time.
All right.
Of course. Yeah, I think I saw Greg with his hand up.
Go ahead. We'll start with Manu.
Go ahead.
Greg is new, and so he's got a question. Doug?
I can use my teaching voice. My name is Manu Tiranis, and five Lexington Road. And as you know, I think, and then they know, my students and I, we did a strategic plan for our town. And I'm sorry, but I need to say that I don't agree. The number one cause of CO2 emission in Massachusetts and Long Meadow private cars, not the housing. And then we did a lot of strategies, what to do with it, how we can deal with it, and then at this point in time, I'm doing some research with my German and Japanese colleagues on electric cars, because as you know, lithium is a pretty dangerous mineral. We have only one mine in Nevada. Most of it comes from China, and then Australia is another country, but the issue.
I don't know what it is.
Yes, exactly, because EV, electric cars, actually, there are a lot of dangers and issues associated with them. So in order to reduce the emissions, something that we need to do is public transportation more than anything else at this point in time, like for the schools, for, but if you have seen our town, when the middle of the schools, they need to pick up their student, their, their kids, I mean, forever, they're lining up and all the cars are on. And, uh, and those are the things that we need to pay attention. The other thing, uh, as you know, there is a site which is amazing, the most dangers for our area, you put your address in, it comes up, the most danger in our area is flooding. And what Mayor Dominic Sarno has done in Springfield, we need to do that, to clean up our ponds, to get the CO2 emission that comes from those, uh, green algies out of our area and open it up. And then the next, the next thing is CO2 emission, and the wind, actually, and the lowest risk for all of us, minimum risk, is CO2 emission. So we need to gather our information in a format that, uh, they make sense, and then there are no dangers. For example, as I said, what do you do with lithium batteries? Only Tesla accepts at this point in time for recycling. You can't take it to Tesla. Nobody else does. So what do we do with them? All right?
Hi, Greg Link, 125 Cooley Drive. So to the point about the electric cost, I, I plug in my, my car as well, but it, I'm running off solar, so my house has run off completely solar. Um, it can be done off-grid. You can do battery backup, doesn't have to be lithium, it could be other sources of batteries, um, but it could be off-grid, so it could actually turn into a money-raising thing, not a money-costing thing. Um, and certainly, if it was located at the shops, it would actually drive business to the shops as well, as people sit there and wait for their cars to charge, either they got to eat somewhere or do something, so there is a secondary effect. Excellent.
So let me see if I can focus this a little bit in terms of what it is I think you're asking us to do, and why the Energy and Sustainability Committee is here, because I think one of the questions is whether or not we're the appropriate source to help work with developing the scoping plan and pull together this greenhouse gas inventory. Is that correct?
Greenhouse gas emission reduction plan, because the inventory's done. I mean, we're not, we're not doing another inventory as part of this process this year.
So I guess my question is, what's the purpose of our meeting right now, then? In terms of the Energy Sustainability Committee with you and the select board at this point? I think one of the things I understood is that the select board may not be the great entity to actually do this work with you, but they were looking for a vehicle to do this. Is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding from Corinne, who's the main person I've been communicating with, um, was that I would probably be working with your committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's correct. So it's, you know, this is just kind of like a kickoff meeting, just for the town to be aware that this is happening, for the select board to be aware this is happening, um, and to just kind of start this initial discussion. But from here on out, they will be working mostly, you know, with you all, attending your meeting next and working with you all.
Can I, before, I was going to say, it seems like a natural place for this to sit. We've already started a lot of work on this. We've partnered with Home Works. We have, I'm going to look to have Greg, who's our technology person, bring up information about, we're already reducing greenhouse gases.
Right.
We have a fair.
Yeah.
One of the things that you're talking about here is community outreach and getting involvement on that, which would be something that we don't have the capability of doing on our own in a good way. So for us, that would be a very constructive thing. I think part of what Manu is coming up with and other people are coming up with are actually going into specific recommendations on how to keep reducing our greenhouse gases. We don't have much control of that in the Energy Sustainability Committee. We can only make recommendations to the select board and to the town for adoption. But I think my reading of this is that you would help us, and we would need support, some support from the state, the town, on really implementing community outreach, survey development, getting their input. And I think part of my question is, how do we do that in a way that's going to say, okay, we don't have, um, administrative staff for our committee? So we're kind of stuck with your time, and then who's going to help coordinate that with us? Would be some of the questions I would have.
Go ahead, Mark.
Andrea, if I can try to answer your question, or try to answer a question. There, there are two issues here, I think, or two approaches to the issue. And the first is the residents of Long Meadow and their private use of vehicles, their choices of how they heat and put, apply electricity to their homes and all that kind of stuff. And frankly, you know, we are a advocate and maybe, uh, trying to do a little arm twisting, but short of imposing things like our stretch energy codes and things like that, it's very difficult to impose that on, on residents. Can't help somebody, you got to buy a, an electric car. The other side of the coin, though, is the town and the town's buildings. And, and I'll just use an example. We're embarking on the construction, likely, of a new middle school. You know, we built a high school, we built a senior center, we built a DPW, and all the green energy and all the things we had kind of went out the window because we're worried about cost, you know? But is the town going to take a stand? And how is the town going to take a stand? And what should happen, should we, as likely happened, build a new middle school? You know, are we going to require that to be a, a zero energy, you know, net zero facility? I don't know that. You know, on the other hand, are we going to not? That's something that, not just the select board, but there's a school committee, there's a planning board, there's a whole bunch of elected people in this town who need to be brought on board, because how this is implemented on the town side is very different from how it's implemented on the resident's side. And frankly, I'm going to look to your group to say, you work on the resident's side and, you know, continue to force us to work on the town side.
Go ahead, Josh. I'll go after you.
Uh, yeah, just to, um, mark on that, I, I think that that's a great example, middle school is a great example of how these things actually get done, because we're, they drill the well to check for, uh, and I don't remember the, the technology, but.
Geothermal.
Yeah, geothermal, to use something down there to heat or cool or whatever. I didn't under-, I didn't totally understand it. But the, it will probably get done, because it'll be cheaper. We'll get incentives from the state, there's federal incentives there, and it'll cost less long-term. And that, and you're right, we can only do so much, but that's some, that's the way you affect things, by giving it, uh, incentives. So that's a, a great example, and I had another one, another point, I can't remember, so.
Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I'm picking up on that. Now, according to the scope that we have here, do you want us to report to you as we're going forward? Should we meet in between before we come up with a plan? I mean, what is, from your point of view? How do you want us to report on the ongoing thing? You, in general.
Well, I, I do think that's.
You, the plural you.
I think that there is a memo that is also attached to the agenda that Corinne, um, prepared, and it has a recommended action and timeline. So, you know, it has steps that you all will take, and then it does have another meeting. Right now, it's proposing that this happens in March, where you all update us.
Okay.
On, on the work. So, you know, for me, that makes sense, and, you know, we can, if something changes, we can obviously, uh, adjust, but there is a proposed action coming.
I remember the other thing. When I, when we were looking at the church being rezoned, I got a lot of questions, including from your chair. How can we require, uh, green building, et cetera? And the answer is zoning bylaws. I think that's a great tool to, one of our only tools, really, to make sure that we can implement some goals here, and you're lucky you have a planning board member on your committee. So I'd recommend you utilize, Brian, and through this process, because it, it's really easy to have goals. It's a whole different ballgame if you have bylaws that have to be followed. And, uh, we don't have a lot of space to build in town, but things do get rebuilt occasionally. Um, and so you have to be proactive on those things, and we can't require it unless it's already in there, uh, it's, it's in the bylaws. So, uh, I, I recommend, uh, Mark made the point, talk to other people in town, talk to other committees. I think that's totally correct.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Just, just to point out, I think people know here, the Energy and Sustainability Committee is a advisory committee to the select board. So to the extent that you want things done, your answer, Gary, is yeah, you got to come back here and.
That's what I thought.
Get things done. On the other hand, there's, there's a lot of authority at, at your committee level to talk to people and move things along as well.
Okay. Great.
Also on the agenda, if I may, there was a scoping memo that was also provided from Mimi that kind of outlines the meeting dates and the goals of each meeting and what's set there, so I would encourage everyone to read that memo, because it's not outlines exactly the process.
We can't.
As laid out.
All right, excellent. Gary?
Yeah, on that, the second meeting, it says in September 16th, two weeks from today. We just, I think we should have phoned out a little bit, that's not really.
Well, I think that was because originally, the first meeting was supposed to be in August.
Right.
Yeah, she said it might have to be.
Okay, we moved that.
This is just a proposal, and so I think it would be.
Okay.
Time I left actually was. Again, we are advisory. I mean, certainly, we've submitted things to the select board for recommendations. You can accept them, you can not. This is, um, to Mark's point, we are going to be doing a great deal of, um, development in this town, and there's lots of ways that we can feed in information, but I think one of the things, from my point of view, that I particularly like is if we can really do a much more robust engagement of the community in with support that actually provides input, so that when we are in more official meetings and we're providing recommendations, we can say to you, you know, of the, and I'd love it if this was this number, of the 2,000 people who responded to our particular outreach, 80% of them say this is what we want to do. Um, it would be great if we could do that. I mean, we were excited when we get 400 responses after sending out like, you know, 6,000 requests, so, um, and we would work with you in creating a timeline. I guess I still go back to wanting to be able to better coordinate this with the town administration in a way that allows us to make sure that we're all communicating, so that it's not just loaded on us as a surprise, and that's really important for us on this.
Thank you. Anything else?
Anything else that I'm missing?
All right, great. Well, thank you so much for joining us. I think you all have to probably make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I make some more second, go in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Um, we do have a public hearing beginning at 7:30, so, um, I will now move on to select board announcements. School committee and housing authority vacancies. Reminder, there are current vacancies on the school committee and housing authority for terms expire at the June 2025 annual town election. Residents that are interested in interviewing for the vacant role on the school committee should send letters of interest and a resume to selectboard@longmeadow.org and schoolcommittee@longmeadow.k12.maa.us by Monday, September 9th. Interviews will be held at a joint meeting of the school committee and select board on Monday, September 16th, with appointments to follow on September 24th. The housing authority vacancy deadline has been extended to September 25th. Residents interested in the housing authority position are encouraged to send letters of interest and a resume to selectboard@longmeadow.org by this new deadline. Interviews will be held at a date to be determined. The fall special town meeting is set for Tuesday, November 12th at 7:00 PM at the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. Citizen petitions are due in the select board's office no later than noon on Friday, September 27th. In order for a petition to be guaranteed placement on the special town meeting warrant, 100 names, signatures, addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. You can find forms, instructions, and additional information at longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. The Complete Streets Advisory Group has launched a survey to help inform their work on the updated prioritization plan. All community members who walk, bike, run, drive, or use public transportation are encouraged to take this short, eight-question survey, which will close on September 18th. The results will help prioritize areas for improvement. To learn more about the Complete Streets work and to take the survey, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civillearts. Long Meadow Community Electricity is a program in development by the Town of Long Meadow to provide residents and businesses with new town-vetted options for electricity supply. The program will be open to electricity customers in Long Meadow, whether they are resident, a business, a renter, or an owner. The draft plan for the program is available for public review through October 7th, 2024. On the program website, longmeadowcommunityelectricity.com, you can download a copy of the draft plan, learn more about the proposed program, and submit comments on the draft plan. A public hearing on the plan will take place on September 16th during the select board meeting at 7:00 PM in meeting room A15 at the LPS central offices. The hearing has virtual access, details of which can be found at longmeadowcommunityelectricity.com. Long Meadow Community Electricity will not replace Eversource, the electric utility in Long Meadow, which will continue to deliver your electricity, repair power outages, maintain the electricity grid, and manage all billing. Okay. So I think we have time for at least one resident comment. Who's here for resident comment? Tom? Close up? Okay.
I didn't bring my timer, so I think it'll be shorter. Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. I am optimistic that this is the last time we'll be discussing the improper storage of pool chemicals at Bliss Pool in July. No more letters, I'm holding a tough one in abeyance. I believe the town DPW and its cert-, certified pool operator will be very careful next year in the storage of pool chemicals, since there have been two incidents and two CYA letters from the fire department in the last two years. As Captain Vera states, develop a plan, education, enforcement, supervision are critical. My original email to the town manager was cordial, alerting her to the issue, and she acted quickly to alleviate the situation. Proper response back should have been Tom. We were taking care of it, personnel have been spoken to, indoor reprimanded it, there'll be further supervision, education. In summary, some accountability. The recent full letter from the fire department, not just the excerpt, is interesting. Town manager and select board chair's excuse for the storage was the storage room was full. The fire department says the storage room ventilation was broken. Which one was it? Since if the room was not full as stated, would the chemicals have been placed where the ventilation was broken? Note, the fire department stated, there was an exceedance or violation regarding the oxidizer. Sealed containers, the muriac acid last year was in a sealed container. What would have been possible this year is hop the fence, same as last year, no break-in, because the chemicals were on the pool deck, pop the lids, mix the chemicals, or throw them around the pool deck in the playground or in the pool, delaying the opening. Fire department said contamination is bad. Pop the lids, mix them together, burn. Only 24 hours and less than 95 degrees. Might have been over the weekend if I did not alert the town, so well over 72 hours. I doubt the DPW workers made a time or temperature decision, and if there was no problem, why did the DPW scramble two people over to the pool at 7:15 next morning to take care of the situation? Which, like I said, prompt response. The material data sheets and labeling on the containers do not have a time guideline, lid disclaimers. It says, "Storage, cooled, dry, secure, ventilated, and separated." I spoke to the regional head of the State Department that deals with hazmat, as well as two. as two certified pool operators and a pool chemical company. All have stated chemicals should not have been stored there. Bottom line, they should have taken them away if they didn't need them that day and brought them back to the DPW. I'm uncomfortable with the fire department memo using words such as likely, greater or lesser risk, and unlikely. These chemicals represented a burn risk, eye and lung risk, and would have been sent back to the DPW if not needed at the end of the day. The thought that there is no prescriptive definition of security...
All right, Tom, let's wrap up real quick.
Okay. I'll get to the point. There were no lights, there were no lights last year. In summary, chemicals should not have been stored on the pool deck. Residents expect the town will do better next year. I think we're done with this issue for this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anyone else? We could fit in one more resident comment? Yep, please.
Can you delay it till after?
I just, if somebody else wants to do a comment before we start our dog hearing, they can.
How long does the hearing take?
I can't tell you. I don't know.
Dodge?
What, sorry?
Other than a wide dodge?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we'll be doing resident comments after, too.
After?
Yeah, after, too, yeah. I mean, folks will have an opportunity to speak after the hearing.
Beneath it's a one minute.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So let's get Attorney Chaplin, and I think I saw Marty Lee outside as well. We can let her know we're about to start. And if anyone else is here for the dog hearing outside.
I'm gonna move that we open the dog hearing.
Second? All right.
You can do it.
Okay, I can do that. Okay. All those in favor? All right. Great. All right. Thank you, Attorney Chaplin, for joining us tonight to help guide us through this dog hearing. So this dog hearing has been triggered by our animal control officer, Marty Lee. Thank you, Marty, for, you know, advising the select board and making us aware of this. This is, you know, for those of you that have read this in the agenda, this is a, was a heartbreaking event that I think has been communicated to me, was, you know, heartbreaking for all those involved and all those feel, you know, terribly about this. But of course, you know, we offer our condolences to Ms. Sokolson and her family for, you know, their loss, you know, during this event. So I think the first question I want to do is kind of set the table and see who is here to possibly speak. I know that Mr. Castertello and also Ms. Sokolson were notified of this. Are you Mr. Castertello?
I'm Mr. Castertello.
Okay, thank you for joining us, Mr. Castertello. And I do not know if Ms. Sokolson is here. Okay. And so counsel, I will kind of look to you for how we should best proceed. If we should take maybe testimony first from the animal control officer or whether we should talk to Mr. Castertello? Whatever you think.
Absolutely. My inclination, which is sort of against conventional wisdom, is I tend to hear from the owner first and then go to the animal control officer. There's no tried and true way to do it. Just for the benefit of those in the audience, as the chair stated, there's a statute in Massachusetts that says whenever we have a written report that a dog may be a dangerous dog, it charges this board with investigating that complaint. So we hold a public hearing like this. And there are some definitions, which I guess the board is well aware of, so I'll hold off on all of that until we have questions. But my recommendation would be that we perceive a testimony from the owner. And I typically, you know, ask if they've had a chance to review the police report, which we have in this case, reported the animal control officer, and if they have any, you know, if they either agree with the report or if there's anything they'd like to add or differ with.
Okay, great. And then I know that typically we swear them in first, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. So go ahead, Josh.
I just, beneath the, if you don't mind, I thought it would be helpful to actually get the definitions, just for everyone listening to remind us, I don't think Andrew's been through one of these before, and also are the remedies we can propose.
Sure, yeah. Perfect.
All right. I was gung ho and ready to go into it, and I know for some folks, this is repeat, but essentially, the first thing, so the board will listen to testimony from all the witnesses, I'll swear them in. The first thing the board has to do after the testimony closes is the board has to determine whether or not the dog in question fits the statutory definition of a dangerous dog or the statutory definition of a nuisance dog. So for the record, a nuisance dog is a dog that, one, by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. Two, by excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find that behavior disruptive to their quiet and peaceful enjoyment. Or three, a dog that's threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but the threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under the circumstances. So that's a nuisance dog. A dangerous dog, by contrast, you can get there two ways. One, without justification, a dog that attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical death or injury. Or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic animal. So to recap, the testimony goes in, testimony's closed, the board decides, does the dog that we heard testimony about meet the statutory definition of a nuisance dog? One of those three ways you get there. Statutory definition of a dangerous dog, one of the two ways you get there. If the board finds that neither of those definitions is applicable, the hearing is concluded. Nothing further happens at that point. If the board finds that the dog is a nuisance dog, the statute says that the board shall order remedial action that will ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. It doesn't get any more specific than that. By contrast, if the board finds that the dog is a dangerous dog under the statutory definition, the statute says the board has essentially seven options to choose from. It can be one or more depending. That could be confining the dog. That could be an order that the dog be muzzled. It could be an order that the owner secure liability insurance. Could be an order that the owner put a dog run in. Could be an order that the, that the dog be altered, so neutered or spayed. Could be an order that the owner make the dog identifiable to the animal control officer. That could be through a chip, that could be through photographs. There's some other examples in the statute. The most, the most extreme remedial action that the statute permits the board to order is humane euthanasia. And there are, there are some circumstances where that's ordered. So that, that is the, that is the hearing. Again, at a high-level testimony, under oath, after the testimony, the board makes a finding dangerous or nuisance or neither dangerous nor nuisance. And then depending upon which finding the board makes, the board may have to order remedial action. It's either in the general sense under nuisance or it's one of the seven specified dangerous dog remedies if the board goes in that direction.
Great, thank you. Anything else before we talk to Mr. Castertello? Okay. Mr. Castertello, if you don't mind, counsel will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight, Mr. Castertello. I guess we will start off by, I'll start off by asking if you've had a chance to review the police department report about the incident?
Yes.
Okay, and do you find that report to be true and correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. And have you had a chance to review the animal controls officer, animal control officer's letter to us?
I have, yes.
Okay, and do you find that to be true and correct?
Yes.
As well? Okay. I know that the animal control officer has recommended that your dog be muzzled whenever they leave the house. Is that a recommendation that you are okay with and find that you'll be able to comply with?
Yes, I, yeah, I don't have a big problem with that, no.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, select board? Josh?
How old is Hank?
He's just turned two.
And has he been neutered?
Yes.
And what kind of muzzle are you currently using?
Well, I bought a muzzle. I've only put it on him once. It's just like a mesh that covers his snout.
How often do you normally have, or, so you've only used it once. Have you had Hank out of the house or has he been home?
I haven't had him out of the house, other than to take him to the vet, since the incident occurred. One walk early in the morning with the muzzle, but otherwise, no. I mean, we walk, we walk him every day. And this was an unfortunate incident and he, I live on Converse Street, we have a very wide tree belt there. And I was walking, I guess it would be east on Converse. And I saw an elderly woman with a small dog from a distance, so I went out almost onto the street. I couldn't go onto the street because of the, there was traffic. And as we started to cross paths, my dog does get anxious with other dogs. He's not really that aggressive, but the small dog started barking at him and got aggressive with him, and then he kind of lunged, and I was on wet grass, and I slipped, and he dragged me, and he got the dog. And he's very, he is very strong, and he's got a very strong bite, and unfortunately, that's what happened. But we walk him all the time, we go, we're with, you know, buy dogs all the time, and I've never had a real problem with him. He does, like I said, he does get anxious, but, you know, he has been trained. I, I've also taken him back to training, so I am in private classes with him now. Because we've been told by the vet that he's dog reactive. He's not people reactive at all, but apparently dog reactive. So we're working on that now.
That's great, thank you.
I don't have the answer. Who else?
Couple of quick questions. How much does Hank weigh?
I would say he's about 130.
And is there any kind of fencing in your yard?
Oh, yeah.
There, okay.
Yeah, he's, I mean, we have a fenced-in yard. He's in the house or in the back, you know, and it's, we have a big yard, but there's a smaller part that's fenced in for him.
That's all I have? No?
Okay.
Sorry, did one more. When you, before the incident, were there certain times when you would walk Hank?
We used to, we usually walk him, on a weekend, we'd walk him mid-morning. We have a route that goes down into Forest Park, and we would do about two and a half miles. And then after I come home from work, we'd walk him during the week. And like I said, we've never really had an issue.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? All right. And counsel, do we swear in the animal control officer as well?
I will.
Okay.
Good evening. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes.
Awesome, great. Well, thank you so much again for joining us tonight, Marty Lee. So, you know, we've read obviously your letter and your recommendation, so if you could just maybe explain a little bit about why you think this recommendation is, you know, why it meets the mark and kind of explain your thinking behind it, that'd be helpful for us.
Well, I obviously feel really sad for both parties. I think both parties love their dog. I think it's just, it's a really sad thing to happen. He, Mr. Castertello, had to quarantine the dog by mass state law for the 10 days. And after the 10 days, he was considering euthanasia because he thought he really didn't have a choice. And he went to the vets, and the vet called me, and the vet wasn't really comfortable euthanizing, would have if, you know, they usually call, they don't just, and they said the dog's not at all people aggressive, it's dog reactive. And so he chose to take the dog back home and think on it and would like to work out some solution to be able to keep his dog that he loves, but obviously we can't have this happen again. So I don't have any problems with this dog. I've never picked this dog up running as a stray. This isn't a dog that's getting out all the time, so he was walking on leash, it's not like he was off-leash, it just, he slipped, the dog pulled away. So my recommendation would be that, you know, he be able to live with the dog in his house, how he's living and loving his animal, but that if the animal is leaving the house at all, that it be muzzled so that if another dog, if, God forbid, he was to pull him, if he was to knock him over, that the dog would be muzzled and could not cause any damage.
Okay, great. And then the muzzle that Mr. Castertello described that he has purchased for the dog, that is sufficient?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you can muzzle, as long as it's properly, if it's, you know, a properly fitted muzzle, then, I mean, he has, he has as much to lose if he doesn't have a properly fitted muzzle and this was to happen again, you know, so, so I would, I would say a properly fitted muzzle that the dog can't get off, you know, if he was going to walk him.
And have you had a chance to view Mr. Castertello's backyard to make sure that the fencing and everything is also sufficient?
I did not. I quarantined the dog, and at that time, we thought the dog was being euthanized. And then, so no, no, I have not, but I also have not picked this, the problem wasn't this dog escaping. The problem was that the dog pulled hard and he slipped.
Mark? Yeah, Marty, a question. This is a two-year-old dog. I mean, are you recommending that for the rest of this dog's life, which could be 10, 12 years, that this dog be muzzled when it leaves the property?
Ah, yes, I am, because if this was your dog that died, some people would, would probably feel I'm being too linear and would want the dog euthanized. I personally don't want the dog euthanized. I myself have owned, I owned a shepherd that was aggressive to anyone outside of our family. And so my dog lived a great life. He lived 10 years. We have a fenced-in yard. He loved his family. He ran around our yard. But if I left the house, he did, he went on a muzzle because he, you know, I didn't want to euthanize my dog, so I just knew I had to be responsible. So, so in my mind, that's the best of both worlds. This dog can enjoy his family, but not hurt somebody else's dog.
Thank you.
Anything else? Attorney, Jeff, questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. A question for you. So if we classify this dog as a nuisance dog or as a dangerous dog, what is the lifespan of that classification? I guess I'm just asking if another incident occurs, does this, you know, does the previous classification carry with it, or is that like a new incident where we would have to make a new classification?
In practical terms, I think once, that's a, that's a good question. I think it's a new, once a dog's deemed dangerous, the dog's dangerous, but I think what boards are really asking me when they ask me that is, you know, if there's an incident that wouldn't rise to the level of dangerousness in the future, then do we basically get to revisit our order? And the answer is not unless you, again, find the dog dangerous.
Okay.
I suppose in that future instance, you could consider the totality of the dog's behavior to arrive at dangerousness, but it's kind of a difficult hypothetical because there's no facts really attached to it.
I guess where I'm trying to get at is if we deem this dog a dangerous dog, we're restricted to the remedial actions that we can order.
That's true.
If another incident happens where we think remedial action, that's not one of those seven that are enumerated, where we think that would be appropriate, would, you know, would we be able to do that, I guess?
So, just kind of spelling out the hypothetical, let's, let's say, let's say you find the dog dangerous tonight and you order muzzling exclusively, and then there's a subsequent incident. For that subsequent incident, you could, oh, I see, yeah. That's, that's, I've never had it go that way. I've seen it where you have a dog who's found to be a nuisance, and then there's a subsequent incident, and you find the dog to be dangerous. And the penalty gets more severe at that point. So I've never had the question posed to me, if you find a dog dangerous at time one, find the dog nuisance at time two, and then utilize sort of the more flexible statutory structure at time two for nuisance. I suppose, I suppose you could. I've never seen it happen, but it seems, you know, that the second finding would be in response to a second incident, and if the incident didn't fall within dangerousness, then I suppose you could make a nuisance finding, and the dog could both be nuisance and dangerous, and the two orders would attach to it.
A good bar exam question. But I, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to, for me, I think the town restricts itself if we deem a dog a dangerous dog, because it's my understanding that as, if we deem the dog a nuisance... that as, if we deem the dog a nuisance dog, right, we can still utilize any of the remedial measures besides euthanizing?
It sounds like we could do both if we wanted.
We could do both.
We could give the dog a dangerous dog and a nuisance dog.
Oh.
Could we, based on one incident, you have to, you have to pick one or the other. But if you have multiple incidents and multiple hearings, in theory, you could have multiple findings based upon the case.
I did, I did have a dog years ago, and, and I'm sorry because I don't think we had a lawyer at the ti, at the time. This was like, I don't know, 15, 20 years ago. This was a long time ago. We had a dog, a pimple on Greenacre that bit somebody. And the board kept putting more and more and, like, the dog kept escaping and kept, so they just kept adding on, they actually never ordered it euthanized, but they kept adding on more and more and more restrictions. So I know we have done that. This isn't that case of a dog that keeps escaping things.
Right.
If I might, I did read the statute. And, and the statute does talk about the dog defending itself or its owner. And, I mean, I would argue that when, when I was passing that dog and it started at my dog, he was probably defending me, if not himself. So I don't think we have to, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's imperative that the dog be found dangerous. He happens to be a big dog, and the other dog is a small dog. But he was, I think he was defending himself as well, and defending me. Because he wasn't the fir, I mean, he didn't react first. The other dog was, it was a small dog, it was a chihuahua, and they can be very aggressive. And that dog started at him, and he reacted.
Go ahead, Josh.
I'd like to move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great. Thank you for joining us. Okay, now that the public hearing is closed, do we have any motions?
I'll move that we find Hank a dangerous dog under MGL 150, 140, section 157.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, some discussion. Now, I, this is my least favorite thing we do, easily. I love dogs. I would never, I would have a lot of trouble doing the ultimate penalty on a dangerous dog. And I don't plan on proposing that today, but I don't, I'm sympathetic to, yes, I understand that a chihuahua is barking at your English mastiff, but that is not, that's a disproportionate response. And the owner of a dog that is that powerful has to recognize that. And I know you do. But I think we need to take pains to make sure this never happens again. Because just as much as I would never want to take away someone's dog, I also never want to have a dog that I had a chance to restrict, harm another dog. And so, like I said, I do not, I don't, I don't think I could ever honestly vote to euthanize a dog unless it was really extreme. So, but I think there's other things we can do. That's, I just wanted to know. That, that's my thought process. And I don't, to me, to find a nuisance dog, I think would be inaccurate.
Anyone else?
So had we gone, if we were to go the nuisance route, we could increase, you know, whether it's, you know, the muzzle, but just changing, you know, adding additional measures potentially with the dangerous dog, we can't necessarily go backwards, if that makes sense?
It's my understanding that there would have to be an additional complaint that would come in, if that's correct, Attorney Chaplin?
That's, I mean, quite frankly, either way, the board really doesn't get to revisit its order one way or the other unless there's a subsequent incident. And at that point, more or less, the slate is, I don't want to say it's clean, because you can take into account the prior incident. But, but there's no, there's really no revisiting, whether you go nuisance or whether you go dangerous. As a practical difference, if you went nuisance instead, tonight, you could order training and muzzling as opposed to just muzzling. If you go dangerous, you can't order training because it's not one of the seven menu options, for lack of a better term.
So I think, so that's kind of where, where I'm going personally, is I, excuse me, I agree with Josh. I mean, I think it's based on the definitions that were given, if, you know, appears that it's a dangerous dog. But, and I definitely do not want to be euthanizing a dog. And this is a terrible story. It's unfortunate. But I just feel that we have the ability to put other measures in place if it's a nuisance versus a dangerous dog. So that's kind of where I'm hung up on this. But regardless, we're not going to be supporting euthanizing the, the dog. I think that's pretty, pretty clear.
I, I'm, with the options that are available to us, I'm comfortable that we can craft a response. I see what you're saying. But I, I think, I don't want to set a precedent that a dog can kill another dog and it's just a nuisance dog. And I, I just, I don't know, it doesn't ring true to me. It's a failure of the statute, but we're limited. But I, to me, I think we have enough, I think we have enough options here.
I can go with Josh. I feel he, that this dog definitely meets the definition, as you gave us, that he attacked another animal aggressively, the definition of a dangerous dog. But I do, I do think that it sounds like muzzling is a solution that there is consensus on. I also want to recognize, there's no, there's no way we're ever going to have zero risk in a situation like this. We're balancing compassion with the unlikely possibility that he attacks another, your dog attacks another dog and claws the dog and hurts the dog. So I think that this is, you know, I assume we will achieve consensus, but I do think dangerous dog is the right definition.
Yeah. If I could just ask one more question, Attorney Chaplin? Yeah. Under our options, the, among the restraints, so would that include a leash that attaches around the waist or some mechanism that, so the dog can't run away? Period. I know that it says that the person keeping the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained, not exceeding 30 feet. Can that restraint be attached to the, to the body of the person walking?
I've never seen that, but it would certainly seem to be in the spirit of the statute. I know that it also talks about the tensile strength of the, of the leash as well. So I've never seen that specifically ordered, but I mean, I think, I think that would stand up.
I see it with my daughter, who will walk in the dog and will hold it with two fingers, not really going to do anything.
Right.
And if a dog bolts, I would like the person to be stuck there, and the dog stuck to the person, so.
I was stuck. He, he never got away from me. He dragged me. So it's not, and I, and I would suggest that around the, around the waist, you don't have the leverage to hold the dog back if he does lunge. If I'm holding him by the, if I'm holding him by the leash, he's never, it's, I happen to slip on wet grass in the morning. That, that's really what happened.
But you have to understand, the, the other way, this mastiff could hurt a dog with its paws, jumping on it. If you're telling us that you're not going to be able to make it work, you'll have to keep the dog at home.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm happy to do the mastiff, and I'm, I'll do whatever you want me to do.
I don't necessarily, I think what he's saying is I don't necessarily think that's safer. That he might have more, I still, my recommendation is still the muzzle, because I do think you have better control.
Oh, this is in addition to the muzzle.
I think Josh's point is that if you lose control of the dog, which is possible, then the dog is loose. And if you're attached to the dog, then it's less likely it can roam further and cause more damage, I suspect.
I also have knocked over Mrs. Sokol. And we just, we have to do what we can to protect people. That's why we have these hearings.
I get it.
Anything else? All right. So we have a motion to deem the dog as a dangerous dog in front of us. We have a second. We had discussions. So all those in favor? Okay. And then in terms of remedial measures?
I would, can we just ask the attorney just to list the seven again?
Absolutely. This, this time, I'm, I'm going to read them. So option number one, that the dog be humanely restrained, provided, no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building. Option two, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided, however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper, provided further, such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor, secure to the sides thereof, the sides shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet, and provided further, that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. Option three, that when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding 3 feet in length. Option four, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000, insuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional, of the dog, or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued, provided, however, that if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon request of the hearing authority, that's this board, or a justice of the district court, and provided further, that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce proof of efforts to obtain that insurance. Option five, that the owner or the keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, veterinary examination, tattooing, or microchip implantations, or a combination of those methods. Number six, that unless an owner or keeper of the dog provides evidence that a veterinarian is of the opinion the dog is unfit for alterations because of a medical condition, the owner or keeper of the dog shall cause the dog to be altered so that the dog is not reproductively intact. Or option seven, that the dog be humanely euthanized.
Great. Thank you.
All right. I'll move that Hank, when he's removed from the premises, be fitted with a muzzle to be inspected by our animal control officer, and a leash, leash that is affixed to Hank and around the walker's waist with a tensile strength not less than 300, 300 pounds and not exceeding 3 feet in length. And that the, that Hank be, no, that's, that's it for now.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
The thing I was hesitating on was pet liability insurance. And the, I was going back and forth on it, and the reason being that I, I'm hopeful this will prevent this from happening again. And so we won't need pet liability insurance. So if anyone feels otherwise, you know, that's, we can vote no and try again. But that's, that was my thought process.
No, I had, I had the same thought. I think I can't say conclusions as you. So I'm comfortable with not including that at this point.
Just so we're clear, so the, are we suggesting that the leash also has to be wrapped around Mr. Casertello? Is that?
Correct, yeah. See, people running with them, sometimes running leashes. So it's a belt, hooks onto the belt.
So I'm sorry, I'm just like right now, I'm trying to look up, you said for 300 pounds?
Tensile strength. That, that's the, that's the statute. It just says that.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering how easy that is going to be to, to get. That's, that's, I'm just wondering, you know, I've never done this. I've never, I'm wondering how easy, just, just because I have other orders you guys placed that still are not, because it was hard for the people to get all the things that were ordered. So I'm just trying to make this so that he can, so I can't tell. I guess if it's not easy to get, we'll end up back here.
So I, just a quick search, a half-inch leash from some companies has between 500 and 900.
Perfect, okay. Because I just quickly pulled up these waist things that are all just saying up to 125-pound dog, but that's different than what you're saying. So, okay.
Great. Anything else?
All right. My only, my only concern is the, is the leash that Josh, Josh is talking about, just because, I mean, I have a dog, he's 40 pounds, and if I put that type of leash around my waist, I just don't know how I would, how I might slip. I might, I'm just not used to using that leash personally, and I don't, I'm not sure if Mr.
I don't think the leash has anything to do with the weight of the dog. It's just a tensile strength.
But there's still, you know, if you're in tug-of-war, and you have something around your waist, and you're, you're moving in a different direction, and the dog does a sudden movement somewhere, I, I just don't know. I just, that, that's my only concern is that it could be harmful for the, for Mr. Casertello as well. And that's just something that, you know, I'm thinking of right now, if I was in his shoes. Maybe it's a better way for him to walk his dog. I just don't know. I think that might be something that we, we could come back and revisit. Maybe Mr. Casertello could investigate and try to use that type of leash, and if he's comfortable with it, and I think that would be a good thing. But I just don't, I don't know enough about leashes.
I, I used to have one, and I'm just pulling one up for Dan. But this, so this is the leash that hand, goes around your waist, and then there's two handles, one very close to the dog, one just off the waist. And that way, it's really just a failsafe. You're not, it's not intended, if you're just walking, if you're running or hiking, maybe you want both hands free. But generally, especially if you have a dog who is going to tug, you want to have a hand on that leash. And so I, I see what you're saying. But I think that, that can be addressed.
I think it behooves us to err on the side of public safety, rather than, I mean, this was clearly one of the options that has been considered in other situations like this. So I think that, you know, they went to the extent of even specifying the tensile strength that's required or necessary or recommended. So I think that's probably the right move, from a public safety standpoint, in my opinion.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So we had a motion, second, discussion. All those in favor? Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Casertello, for joining us. Thank you for your cooperation. Thank you, Marty Lee, for joining us as well. Thank you, Attorney Chaplin. Appreciate you. Anything else? No, I don't believe so. Start your driving.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
This is a pretty early time for you to leave us.
I know.
It's not bad.
Okay. So now we will go back to resident comments. And sir, I think you were up first. You will get three minutes. Please begin with your name, address, and then you can get started.
I think I'd like, my name is Peter Benton. I live at 121 Laurel Street. I'd like to beg the chairs and doggies. On the August 12th meeting, my character was, came into question, and it received a great deal of publicity in Western Massachusetts. I would like to ask for a few more minutes than three to just, I'm going to talk about myself. I don't like to do that. I don't normally do that. But what I would like to do is just address the issue that was, that was criticized, which was my character. I'd like people to know a little bit more about me. I was a candidate, as you know, for registrar. And I think that the people in Long Meadow might also be interested, having heard that and read that in the papers and so forth. They might be interested to know who I am, having read that, living in their community. As I said, my name is Peter Benton. I live at 121 Laurel Street. When I first heard about this, I was angry, but then I became very disappointed that this happened in Long Meadow. Very disappointed that it happened to me. I was never consulted or asked any questions about my, whatever, anything, actually. And it came, it came not only as a surprise, but it also was very disheartening, considering the life that I've led. And I've lived in the community for 43 years. My wife is, she grew up in this town. And her family was very prominent in this town, and my family has been very prominent in other towns. I have a, I'm a CPA. I have a successful practice. I have a, I'm a CPA, I have a successful practice, and my family has a history of public service, and I've had my practice for many years, and I have a lot of clients, and friends, and people that I've done business with through the years, lawyers, public officials, police chiefs, bankers, attorneys, college presidents, business people, laypeople, I know a lot of people, and they know me, and it wasn't just upsetting to me, but it was upsetting to them as well, not only in just this community, but throughout western Massachusetts, where I know, where I've been active myself, and I have two older boys, I have three boys, I have two older boys who are very successful, one, living in other communities, one lives out of state, and I also have a 38-year-old son, and I think that, Dan, you might have seen my son in the high school when you were there, he's a diminutive young man, walks with a gait, and he had an aide with him, Andy is autistic, he's intellectually challenged, he was diagnosed with autism at four, he's profoundly disabled, he has physical disabilities, he's a cancer survivor, he's nonverbal, and needs 100% support 24/7, makes it very difficult for my wife and I, our lives have not been the easiest, but we wouldn't trade it for anything, we love him, he's our son. Andy went through Long Meadow schools, and as I said, Dan, you may have seen him, I don't know if you remember, he left the school in 2005, I think you may have graduated in 2003, or thereabouts, and he...
Mr. Benton, I did let you go over by a minute.
Well, let me just, can I just go a few more?
Yeah, you can wrap up real quickly.
All right, he goes to Sunshine Village, I was asked to be on the Board of Directors of Sunshine Village 13 years ago, I have been very pleased about that, and it's a wonderful organization, they are, they do, they have and support services for intellectually disabled people, I also have written and published two novels and short stories, and they deal with the kind of issues, they also deal with social issues as well, but one thing I want to talk about especially.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Benton.
Well, I just want two minutes.
We've already gone way over, and, you know, I wish this is not the forum to have this type of conversation right now.
I just want to explain one thing, please, Chairman.
Mr. Benton, please, I wish that you would have reached out to me, and we could have talked about maybe putting you in the agenda, or find a different way to have more expansive conversation, but this is resident comment, and I've already let you go over by a minute and a half.
I appreciate that, I will, I will, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton, okay, anybody else here for resident comment? Go ahead. And name, address, and then go ahead and get started.
My name is Dean Roggess, 22 Warren Terrace, I've been a resident of Long Meadow for 54 years, and involved in town matters off and on during that period, thank you for your time in a busy agenda and for your service, I stay with assurance and from experience that Long Meadow is a wonderful town, and its people are good and fair-minded people, the town relies on its residents, friends, and neighbors to volunteer and serve on the many boards and committees that govern and manage the town and its affairs, this is part of what makes Long Meadow such a good place to live, we saw that earlier in the meeting, when, of course, the energy sustainability people were here, very nice, Peter Benton was one of those volunteers, notwithstanding a very busy personal and business life, Peter stepped forward in good faith to fill a vacancy on the Town Board of Registarians, his appointment to the post was taken up by the Select Board on August 12th at a public meeting carried on Long Meadow Cable TV, the appointment was discussed in open session and rejected by the Board based upon allegations made by a Select Board member, in effect branding him as a racist and homophobe, the Select Board member based his charges on his investigation of Peter's background, including a review and interpretation of cherry-picked selected items from Peter's personal Facebook page, I've known Peter for 35 years, and I can categorically state that the charges are false, I am also not aware in my 54 years in town of any other time that a town resident has been subjected to a character attack by a town government board member at an official public meeting, consider the enormity of what has been done, and the effect on Peter's family, business, and community reputation, the allegations were made at a public hearing broadcast on Long Meadow Cable TV, repeated in the reminder that is delivered to 5,000 homes in Long Meadow and 5,000 homes in East Long Meadow, and appeared in an article published in the Republican and On Mass Live, all because he simply volunteered in the best Long Meadow tradition to fill a vacancy in a town board, should he have anticipated a public attack from the Board for his good intentions of town service, the problem becomes, how do you prove a negative, that is, that one is not a bigot once alleged, very difficult, in Peter's case, not so difficult, a good place to start would be a brief review of his years of good works and endeavors.
And Mr. Roggess, if you could please wrap up, we've had three minutes.
Okay, well, maybe I just have one more minute, then I think we have some backup coming to finish, Peter Benton has long been prominent in involvement, service, and improvements in Long Meadow and surrounding communities, he's quietly served his communities in many capacities, are you aware that Benton Drive and the border between Long Meadow and East Long Meadow was named in honor of Peter's grandfather, who was a prime mover behind the development of the East Long Meadow Industrial Park, among other good works?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roggess, appreciate it, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, I think you know the drill, name, address?
I do know the drill, Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg Drive in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, thank you for letting us discuss this today. We had a discussion about a terrible situation with a dog, this is a terrible situation with what's been done to a human being, it was inappropriate, I am embarrassed for what our town has done, I couldn't believe when I read it, the whole nature of what's going on with people being discredited for things that were said many years ago, taken out of context by individuals who don't know the story, is a horrible result, and the Select Board needs to do something about that, are town residents going to be willing to step up in the future to volunteer for positions, knowing that they can be character-assassinated by a member of the Select Board, that is horrible, my suggestion is that maybe it should have been done in executive session, you should have had a breakout to discuss it, so that it didn't become a public issue, I am very disappointed in what I've seen happen in this town with this issue, it should not have happened, okay, and I know Peter for over 25 years, I'm a member of the, I'm a member of the Boston Tax Institute where I teach, Peter has been a student of mine, but I've also used him as an accountant for clients of ours, he has been nothing but perfectly gentleman in all situations, and I think we owe Peter a big apology from the town, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr, anybody else here for resident comments? Name, address, and then you can get started with your comment.
Yes, I'm Robert Humberston of 84 Burbank Road, and I'm here on behalf of Peter Benton, and I was shocked when I watched the proceedings on TV, and I'd like to just simply give a list of everything that Peter has done in the area, besides being a longtime board member and treasurer and chair of the Audit and Investment Committees of Sunshine Village, he organized the Long Meadow Chapter of the Rotary Club in 1996, spearheaded as president chapter's first community project, raised $100,000 plus, and worked with town, community, and family for construction of the current Greenwood Park playground in memory of a Long Meadow child who had passed away, former coach and general manager for youth sports teams, including hockey, baseball, and soccer, past member of Human Relations Committee of Aditus, a nonprofit serving intellectually challenged individuals, in 1997, he co-chaired the CPA Division of the United Way, he's a past business consultant of junior achievement, 37-year member of Rotary International, including East Long Meadow and Long Meadow When Organized, held various positions, including president of local chapters and chair of the District Committee and president of the Rotary Memorial Scholarship Committee, current chair of the Long Meadow Republican Town Committee, SCOR, Springfield Leadership Institute, past graduate and business manager, he is a college instructor, he's taught classes at Westfield State, Bay Path, and Holyoke Community, and he's a published author of two published books, including Brownstone and Ivory, a work of historical fiction set in East Long Meadow and Long Meadow. I would just finish Dean Roggess's letter. In closing, perhaps the Board might consider the following, are town residents going to be willing to continue to step forward and volunteer, knowing now that they may be subject to attacks on their character at a public governmental hearing widely broadcast across various memory, media, when their applications are acted on? When situations arise similar to that of August 12th, shouldn't the Board consider handling the matter as permitted under Massachusetts law, simply in an executive session? The law requires that the person involved be invited and given an opportunity to attend and defend, the matter is then handled privately. At the meeting, the Board requested that a letter be sent to the Republican Town Committee requesting names of persons for appointment, Dean is a member of the Town Committee, and he notes that the Town Committee has not yet received a letter, but would respond promptly when received.
Thank you, appreciate you, anybody else here for resident comment? No? Okay, great, thank you all for joining, for your comments, we will now move on to Select Board comments, does anybody have a comment? Josh?
First wanted to talk about the microburst in town, as people know, I live on Farmington Avenue, and we got hard hit, and the response was fantastic, streets were cleared that night, by the next day, there were crews all over the place swarming to pick up trees, and I just wanted to thank the town and leadership and DPW and Northern Tree for their response, it was really, really impressive, and my whole neighborhood was, had really great things to say, so thank you, and I also wanted to pass on an update from the Middle School Building Committee, we, on the end of last month, we had a meeting to narrow down to one preferred schematic plan, which was a new consolidated building at Williams with a new auditorium, and you can go back and watch that meeting, and the two years leading up to it, I think there were 17 public meetings, and the Board worked really hard to get to that point, and I'm really proud of our work, and impressed by the people that we worked with, including Lynn, so there'll be a lot more to come on that, a lot more decisions to be made, but right now, we, the next step will be to have a hearing, I guess it's not a hearing, a meeting with the Middle School Building Authority to discuss our preferred plan.
Great, thank you. Mark?
Thank you, a couple of things, just a follow-up to Josh's comment, I think that damage from the August 16th severe weather storms that were in that part of town should be separately accounted for, and we should seek transfer from the Operating Stabilization Fund at the special fall town meeting to reimburse the operating budget for these expenses, I think the event is truly, you know, an act of God, if there ever was a definition of an act of God, that funds, that's what the Operating Stabilization Fund is for, and recovery costs for that, which are substantial, there's a tree in my neighborhood, my next-door neighbor's tree, that's still down and hasn't been dealt with by the DPW or Northern Tree for now many weeks, but I think this recovery costs are beyond the normal tree expenses, and if we try to pay for this out of our normal tree expenses, it's done so at the expense of actually the things we want to do, plantings and other things, so I'd like to suggest that the Select Board look to have the town manager collect those costs and separately appropriate those, we did it in the past, obviously it's been a much worse situation, but I think it ought to be done. Secondly, I attended a meeting of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, I reported this before these meetings, that the MPO coordinates overseas major traffic capital projects within the Pioneer Valley, the cost overruns have been seen as an understatement, the X project went from 15 million to 27 million, a bridge in Ware went from 5 million to 15 million dollars, a group of leaders from towns throughout western Massachusetts got together, and I think they gave the message to the DPW that this won't be acceptable, and you say, well, what difference does it make, and the difference is that we're borrowing from tomorrow to pay for today, projects like the Long Meadow, south end of the Long Meadow Street, is just getting deferred more and more and more years, because we're trying to figure out how to pay for this year's projects and next year's projects, and so I think the, I hope the Department of Transportation got the message that they need to get these costs under control and stop this concept of borrowing from tomorrow, because right now, as it sits, the south end of Long Meadow Street is no longer on any plan, anywhere, anyhow, and the plan goes out in these five years, and so I think people should know that, at least I'm, and the other leaders of communities are very, very active in taking care of that and trying to address that. In terms of other issues, I just want to let people know, I think everybody's read now that the labor contract between DRG Operations and the Transportation Union 488, who represents the drivers of the PVTA, were handled, I think my public statement would be that that was done appropriately, I think that the solidarity of the PVTA members, communities, was very appropriate, and it wasn't done just by happenstance, I will just tell people that I spent many, many hours at special PVTA meetings, helping to put together programs for the, to advise DRG and see what they were doing, but the PVTA's most recent press release speaks to the need and the success of the cooperative agreement that was signed, and hopefully it'll lead to many, many years of long-term labor peace and programs, just so people know, the bus service in Long Meadow would not have run without that. And finally, just, people maybe, but I've seen this, but just a quick look forward, at the next Select Board meeting, that's just September 16th, there's going to be a review by Good Energy of the Municipal Aggregation Program, I think that there's going to be a lot of information given out at that meeting, but I think it's important, and the reason for my comments tonight is, I think residents should really educate themselves before that meeting, there's now information posted to the website, as commented in our announcements, and I would urge residents to educate themselves about the municipal aggregation program, and find out what's available and what the opportunities are going to be for the residents, so please, people, go to the town website and look for that.
Thank you, anything else? All right, so now we can move on to the presentation from Fiberspring, and Mike, I think the Fiberspring team is outside. How are you guys? You all can take a seat right here.
Okay, great. Is he nice?
Yeah. And then, yeah, you guys can grab... And then, yeah, you guys can grab them.
All right. Thank you. We've got more coming.
Traffic jam out there.
Yeah.
We'll give you guys a second to get settled in before we get started talking about it. Mike, if you can pull up the presentation in the meantime. Great, thank you.
One of these mics. Mike, you want to grab that? Grab a mic, Tim.
All right, great. So, thank you all for joining us tonight. We've got folks from Fiberspring, as well as folks from the Municipal Fiber Task Force joining us. We, at the last Select Board meeting, discussed the Municipal Fiber Task Force's recommendation that the town partner with Fiberspring to bring fiber internet to Long Meadow. And now Fiberspring is joining us tonight to tell us a little bit more about themselves. I think I talked a little bit at our last meeting about how the task force has spent over seven hours with Fiberspring in meetings, in facilities tours, and that's not even including the, you know, emails and phone calls on the side to better, you know, understand their offerings. So, you know, the Fiber Task Force has spent a lot of time with these folks, and now it's an opportunity for the town of Long Meadow to begin to meet and to familiarize themselves with Fiberspring. So, what, on the agenda, there are a few documents that are attached for folks that are following along. First is a copy of this presentation that they're going to give us. Also, the financial projections, kind of worksheet, that they're also going to go over. And Fiberspring actually took the initiative to watch our previous meeting and take a look at all the questions that were asked during that meeting, and they provided responses, written responses to all those questions. And that's also a document that's attached to the agenda. So, I think what we can do next is, if you all could just introduce yourselves, name, title, and then you all can go ahead and get started with your presentation.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having us. I'm Sean Fitzgerald. I'm the General Manager of South Hadley Electric and Fiberspring.
Good evening. Tim Haas, Hoyok Gas and Electric, CTO.
Hi, I'm John Hein. I'm Chair of the Municipal Light Board in South Hadley. And I was also a Select Board member for twelve years, so I know, I can anticipate the questions are going to be asked.
I'm Mike Kinckery. I'm the Financial Manager.
We have a few other members from the team from the back.
Bob Lisswoll, Telecom Manager for South Hadley Electric.
Adam St. Martin, Director of Operations for Telecom and Electric, South Hadley and Fiberspring.
Kelly Fraser, Marketing and Customer Service Manager for Sheldon and Fiberspring.
The whole team's here.
So, yeah, you all, you all can get started.
All right, great. If you could just, yeah, hit the next slide, please. Thank you. So, just to let you know who we are, so South Hadley Electric is a municipal light plant. We have about 115 years of service to the residents of South Hadley. We currently serve about 8,080 electric customers, over 4,100 broadband customers, and over 1359 phone customers. That picture right down there is in front of our operations center, and that's our building, and a couple of our linemen. Fiberspring was a new residential service that we introduced in 2018. Oh, I'm sorry, the vote was taken in 2018. We, we launched construction in 2019. We started serving our first customers in 2019. The benefits of South Hadley Electric and Hoyok Gas and Electric Solutions, so combined South Hadley Electric and Hoyok Gas and Electric, we are a integrated ISP service, if you will. The way that works is Sheldon provides most of the services, the billing, the customer service, the marketing, the project management, all those things that are required to be an ISP. Hoyok Gas and Electric provides the network operations services. So, I'm going to let Tim Haas talk a little about that. This slide is his. Go ahead, Tim.
Sure. So, Hoyok Gas and Electric, if you're not familiar, we were founded in 1902. We've got about 150 employees. We serve gas, electric, and telecom is a newer business. We're 25 years old. We've been doing an ISP service for about 25 years and incrementally grown it to a multimillion-dollar a year revenue. We partnered up with South Hadley around 2018. We've been messing around a little bit with fiber to the home since about 2013 and have incrementally added towns as we've gone along. And as a result, we've fortified our network substantially to where today, right now, we have 130 gig of internet capacity. We can scale that more than double, up to 300 gig. We have several internet providers, all load-balanced. We own our own ISP space. We do the things that we call table stakes in the ISP business. So, there's this reference up here to Network Defense Attack Mitigation Platform. These are active defense systems that we have in place to mitigate attacks. We're attacked all the time from the internet, and these are automatic mitigation platforms that protect all of our customers, anyone connected to our service. And we invest heavily in those. We currently have, we started from zero residential subscribers in 2017 to now over 11,000, and that continues to grow with South Hadley every day adding subscribers and Chicopee adding subscribers every day. We do numerous business connections, enterprise-grade type stuff, and we have verticals in education, healthcare, and financial. And with our network, do we not just provide internet service, but land, private land-to-land connectivity? So, for these financial institutions, healthcare, who need privacy in our network, we provide a secure transport infrastructure that's outside of the internet to connect their sites together. And we have numerous carrier, carrier network interconnections. As I mentioned previously, we have three upstream providers, all tier-one providers, but we connect to extend the reach of our network to Comcast, Charter, the Mass Broadband Network, Crown Castle, Verizon. And we have connections in various facilities. We locate, we're located in fifteen, what we call POMs, Points of Presence, where we have active network equipment that we, if you, if you can, move to the next slide. And these are the current communities that we're serving today, not all fiber to the home. Some, we have just commercial connections through for some of our healthcare or financial institutions. But, so, this has grown again from, there was no towns here in 2017, and now we're up over a dozen. And hopefully, Long Meadow chooses to move forward and, and we can move that number up, right? So, tying all of this stuff together, we need a network to build it. And on the next screen is just a overview diagram of how our network is constructed. So, we have a major ring throughout Springfield where we lease fiber strands from, from Crown Castle. We, with our partnership with Chicopee and South Hadley, we've built rings, redundant rings through Chicopee and South Hadley. And then, of course, in City Proper and Hoyok, we use our own fiber to connect our own facilities together and community anchor institutions and enterprises and businesses. All that stuff ties back into two locations here in Springfield. We call them our gateway locations, and that's where our three internet providers and all of our main gateway connectivity is accessed. Any questions on the network? Yes?
This is probably the dumbest question you've ever heard.
Probably not.
So, you have 130 gig capacity.
Yes.
Let's say, my service, which is probably, it's probably a lie, but they say I get 800 megs per second. If, if I was using all that, and say all my neighbors were, and everyone in town said, let's all turn on our 4K TVs.
Yeah.
Can you, is there like a backup if you max out?
Yeah, so, so, networks are kind of funny. You know, they say, you've maybe heard the term, build it and they will come. Well, in networking, you actually, if you want to grow, you have to do that. So, you have to build capacity years in advance. So, we built our capacity about 10 years ago. We started running out of capacity. So, a couple of years ago, we started investing in a next generation of capacity, which we're about to roll out. But what we monitor, we have numerous monitoring systems that help us keep track of this stuff, what's up, what's down, what's being utilized, what's taking hits, what's getting errors. But in the context of that 130 gig, so that's, we've got three providers, we've subscribed, they're both, all three are 100 gig feeds. One is clocked at 50 gig, the second is clocked at 50 gig, and the third is clocked at 30 gig, coming up to 130. We've got a total capacity built in those that we can go to 300. Our primetime capacity, our primetime utilization right now, when we call primetime, it's when everybody's at home, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM nights, is our peak time, and we see these huge, huge mountains during 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Our maximum utilization, average utilization, sorry, is about 50 gig during primetime right now. So, a few years ago, that was half of that. And so, we had to beef things up. But the idea is take at least, be able to take one, a hit on one internet provider and still maintain primetime capacity. And so, that's the intent with, not everybody does it that way, but that's how we kind of forecast our network. And so, if we look at that kind of capacity and look down the road, the infrastructure that we're putting in today, we're kicking it off at 100 gigabit on our major ring, but it's scalable to 200 and then on to 400 gigabit without us changing any hardware. We've built in scalability, so as we grow, we simply, now it's, you basically write a check to buy the license to turn the capacity up on, on the hardware.
So, you're not using, if we start signing on, you're not using that money to increase capacity? You're already ready to do that.
That's right. Yes, we, just in the past two years, we've invested 1.5 million in the network infrastructure alone.
Go ahead, Mark.
I don't know if this is for Tim, but, but, do you, does Shield own the networks, the fiber? Do the towns own the fiber? And how, what's the relationship between the owner of the fiber, and if you will, the service provider or the operator of the fiber?
So, Long Meadow will own the network. You'll own all the fiber on the poles and all the licenses associated with that. And Sheldon and HG&E will be your operator. So, you will pay Sheldon and HG&E a fee to run and manage that network on your behalf.
And, I guess, and if and when Long Meadow starts hitting these peaks, you know, is it our responsibility to tell you we're going to need more capacity? Is it your responsibility to tell us we're going to need capacity? Or is it your responsibility, you just up the capacity and nobody cares?
There's like open communication between us. So, we're not going to, we're not going to whack you more money for, without consulting with you and agreeing upon those terms. However, it's incumbent upon us to inform you when you're reaching your capacity. Let's say you buy a 10 gigabit link, and you're starting to hit that 70, 80 percent. Well, now we want to start talking about maybe moving that to two 10s or a 25 or something like that.
And which Hoyok has done for us. So, we've been upping our...
Yep, 10, 25, and now to 100.
Now to 100. We've just gone to 100, and we've been keeping the dialogue open. But it's important to remember that you're going to create a municipal light plant with a municipal light plant board. And we have a municipal light plant board member here, and so, you will be apprised of these issues and the capacity, and your light plant manager designee, whoever that is, will be in constant communication with us as your internet service provider. And this is the way it works for us with Leverett and Schutzbury as well. We serve them the same way, and it would be the same kind of intergovernmental agreement configuration, same way.
What's the relationship of these municipal light plant boards with the community that they're in? Are they just the, like, like, like the library department or the DPW department?
We're elected. We're elected from the community. So, we have five board members. And every year, there's at least one board member that wants to sit that's...
Are you holding to the, I mean, if you're independently elected, who do you answer to? The residents, I presume, right?
The red payers.
Yeah.
So, so, does that mean you run your own budget?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
So, there's an MLP budget?
Yes.
Separate from the...
Yes.
Town of South Hadley or whatever.
That's correct.
In some communities, the, the board is appointed either by the mayor or the Select Board and not vote. It depends on the structure of the MLP within the individual.
Yeah, yes, right. Yours, yours are appointed, right? So, you can choose when you set up your charter, how you want to establish your board.
Yeah, and I think in some communities too, the Select Board will act as the MLP.
Yep, that happens too.
Yeah, it'll be a decision for us to make.
That's right. Good questions.
Anything else before, they move on? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, I touched on this briefly. You know, Sheldon has about 25 employees and growing. What we can provide to you as your internet service provider, we would be the, the internet service provider with HG&E as our contracted wholesale provider, but we can provide project management. We're really a turnkey solution for you, for your project. We can provide design and poll applications, management, materials, procurement management, engineering, construction, marketing campaigns, customer service, sales, billing, collections, home business installations, network management, which HG&E provides, but we also work in conjunction with 24/7, 365 technical support, emergency response, Lifeline access. Lifeline is a program that helps, you know, make, make it affordable for people to have internet. And there's also E-Rate, which is a school program, which we, we manage for you. Registered IP address with Aaron, which is registering, getting our own IP addresses, the American Registry from, for internet numbers, and then managed Wi-Fi 6 technology. So, really, we provide it all. We do this right now in South Hadley. John Hein is not only our Chairman of the Board, he's also a customer. We have about 2,600 customers right now in South Hadley, then another roughly 1,500 in Schutzbury and Leverett that we manage day-to-day, all these things. And if we go forward with Long Meadow, we can provide any and all of those services. This is just a diagram of what it looks like. You know, we run the fiber in your town. Once it's on the pole or underground, we attach a service drop from the pole overhead to your network interface device, which is attached outside your house somewhere. And then, from that network, it's called a NID, that network interface device, we run right into an optical network terminal, and then a Cat 6 cable up to your Wi-Fi router. It's really very similar to what you have now with your current providers. It's just now fiber optic, which means it's infinitely scalable, it's symmetrical, your upload and download speeds are the same, and you cannot accomplish that with the copper This slide really is just survey results. We have week one surveys, we have three-month surveys, and then we have 12-month surveys. And the green bars really are a good sign. Those bars are all in the 95 or better percentile typically. You see high satisfaction from our customers. And one of the main core reasons is that our installers, they're not on that, that turntable saying they got to go and get to another one and get to another one. We, we tell them, spend the time. So, if a customer needs four hours, they're there for four hours. If they need more, then so be it. We'll be there. We, we give what we call white glove service, and that's the, the model we're going to stick to. We help customers understand streaming. We do a lot of education in the home, when we even help them get connected sometimes to services. So, we're very proud of the survey results. We'll continue to survey our customers every time we acquire one.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Sean, can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Is it a fair characterization just between us here to say that, you know, that Hoyok Gas and Electric kind of maintains the, the wires and the, all that kind of stuff, and you do all the office? I mean, with 25 employees, clearly, when a tree comes down on a wire somewhere, it's not Hoyok, it's not Sheldon from South Hadley's going out and doing it. I assume it's Hoyok Gas and Electric.
Well, I mean, how many linemen do you have?
We have about eight linemen.
And then, plus telecom techs.
Then we have telecom technicians. So, we have about a dozen capable linemen or telecom techs, but we also have subcontractors that we have as backup. So, you're right. When we have the glut of construction, we have to beef up, and we have to have subcontractors support the construction. So, we have providers that we've partnered with that help us construct the fiber optic plant. In a storm situation, we have contracts with those, those providers that we will bring them in. It's the same thing as electricity, right? Municipal light plants have something called mutual aid. So, when one town gets... So when one town gets hit hard, I send out a signal, I get 40 other MLPs in Massachusetts, and then New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, they all respond, and they send crews if they have them. Uh, we, in the telecom side, we have our own contracts established with these providers, and they back us up. And we actually have a shared facility where one of those providers actually co-locates with us, which was a strategic move that we made, so that we have a really strong relationship if we need them, and we've used them. We've had storms in Leverett and Shootsberry and South Hadley, and we've, you know, we're, we're there usually before the power company is. So we're highly responsive, but it's, it's agile management. And, and we can add employees as we grow, so if Long Meadow comes on board, I will look at how many employees I will add, and then I will look at beefing up my subcontracting, uh, agreements that I already have in place.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, excuse me, thank you for presenting, this is, this is great. This is something that, um, as you know, has been coming up, uh, often across the town and residents, and so appreciate all your work. Um, one of the, one of the things that I get questioned about is, okay, so Long Meadow's a customer, can you just kind of walk us through like what that process looks like? Cause we're talking a lot about kind of the, the end game and, and what that looks like, but, you know, I just wanna know like onboarding and, and the support that we're gonna have, because that's kind of a fear from a lot of the residents that I, I talk to.
Sure, so, um, very much like South Hadley, when we had the same, we had customers in the same position. You know, a lot of people, you know, worried. Uh, the way it works is we stand up, but once you get financing, you approve the project, we give you a project timeline, and we have it spelled out, how long it's gonna take to do each step. Um, a Gantt chart, if you will. And Bobby Liswell manages that over there with the team, but, um, once, once the plant is actually up and, and on the poles and ready to connect, we usually stand, we have a website that's predetermined, we have people go in and put in interest or applications. So we know who has the interest, we collect it and gather it. And part of that is doing a campaign to solicit interest, emails, mailers, whatever it takes to get your customers interested. We also do education events, we go to senior centers, we go to the school. Bobby sets up in the back of his truck with Kelly, and they do meet and greets in the neighborhood where they're launching the first fiber optic. So, we get, put a TV on the back of his truck, we pop up tents, and we go to a neighborhood, and we say, this is how you stream. And, um, the, the process is easy, there's no applications. Our technicians, most of them come with 20 years, 15 years of experience. I have three people who came from Comcast who have a ton of experience. So they're very familiar, and, and one of them actually worked in town here, and did a lot of connectivity for their former provider. So, it's a seamless process. Our customer service reps reach out to the customers who say they're interested, they schedule a visit, we visit the home, we assess what the needs are, and then we come back and we actually schedule the installation. It's very seamless, very smooth. We, we've done John's house, right?
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning, we came up, and you wanna talk about it at all, or?
Um, yeah, I, I think, I think the, the, the key is that, um, obviously, not everybody's gonna get it on day one. So we're gonna break up the town into fiber hoods. That is, the street sections of the town where the construction will go in, and, and you, and clearly, you wanna hit those areas that express the highest interest. A piece of advice for either the select board or municipal light board, um, once this starts happening, people are gonna want to say, when am I gonna get connected? When am I gonna get connected? In the grocery store, people come up to me, when am I gonna get connected? Well, I was in a fiber world that had low interest, and so I was at the end of the line. But the benefit of that was, I could tell people, I'm the damn chair and I'm not connected yet. And that pretty much ended the conversation. But that's what, that's, that's the reality, people are gonna get wind of this and they're gonna want it. And you just have to be disciplined in terms of having a strategy as, as to how you wanna proceed, knowing it's gonna take five years to do it.
Right, and the best strategy, we feel, is the fiber hoods with the interest, cause when you collect the interest, it takes the politics out of it. And we go based on interest and construction cost, it's twofold.
And it helps to ramp up your revenue earlier.
Yeah, right, because we're high interest to high penetration.
Right. For your existing customers, do you have, have they experienced rate increases annually? Or how do you guys usually run that, or?
Yeah, there's been zero. In five years, we've had no rate increases. It stayed, we launched it at $74.95, and we get $4.95 off, so we, we offer it at $70, and we have decided not to increase yet. We're looking at those numbers all the time, inflation, you know, there's increases, uh, but right now, we have not.
It's also a highly competitive environment, so when the cable company gets wind, you're gonna see your cable prices start to come down.
Mm-hmm, well, they got one there.
And it's also, I mean, it'll be up to us, uh, you know, whoever the municipal light board is, to set those prices. It's not, you know, fiber spring's decision.
Right, we can guide you and work with you and show you how we came up with the prices we did. It's all based on your CapEx costs and how you gotta price it to get your returns.
David, did you wanna add something?
I think what the select board was asking, I'm sorry to, I, I think what they'd like to see is that Gantt chart, take off the timeline, but it's step one, poll applications, right through, oh, we connected a home, and everything that happens in between. There's a lot of programs, like where they're unfamiliar with the process, and just seeing the steps would give them a little bit better, either more information and certainly more comfortable as to what the process is.
Certainly, I mean, we could provide you step by step, every step of the process that, that we have. I mean, Bobby has a timeline already, actually, I think he has it right here with him, we just didn't bring it on the screen, but here's an example, you know, here's, here's an example of the process, all the items we have to do to get your project constructed. And, you know, we can, we can email this to you, we can share it with you. This is how we, you know, we constructed our, our project.
Sean, what's the time horizon across that?
That goes to, uh, year, year five is 2028, year six is 2029. We would, in five years, hope to have everything constructed in town, five years. That's, that's the way we did our town. Our town was completely constructed in five years. And if, and we finished a little sooner, we finished up in, what, uh, six months early, Bob?
We were six months early, we went in, actually, a year earlier, but wasn't for COVID.
But there's some items in here, I'll just run through a couple of them, you know, establish a project team, responsibilities, develop a plan, meet with the municipality's ISPs, uh, town demographic analysis, cost estimations, IGA contracting, design and engineering, seed money, town funding, sales and marketing plan, billing, customer service process, help desk. There's a whole slew of tasks in here that we've gotta get defined, and, and we can do them relatively fast because we have a lot of experience. We have the, the vendor relationships, uh, and we've done it already.
I would just add, um, we haven't talked about it, but multiple dwelling units. And South Hadley, they were at the end of the process because they present unique financial and logistical problems. So, again, a heads up, you know, when the town is built out and most people, uh, have access to it, um, people in apartment buildings are gonna say, well, what about me? And that takes a separate, um, negotiation, if you will, with the condo association or with the apartment landlord, and it's much more expensive. So, um, you know, keep that in mind, that that's, that may be one of the more difficult issues to deal with as you start rolling out your fiber connectivity.
John, I think your name's John, John? How, how does, I'm, I'm concerned about the cash flow process of financing this. If you're rolling it out, paying for it as you go, how, how did South Hadley finance this and come up with, you know, if, if, if there's few, few people rolling in to begin with, but the first question is, we need $475,000 for poll permits or poll access and some, how did, how did you do that in South Hadley?
Well, Mike can do the details, but we did essentially a $12 million bond.
Yeah, basically, we had funds available so we could borrow from the electric company to cover some of the upfront costs. We got about three years into it, and then we went out and got permanent financing for about $12 million. Now, remember, in it, you know, you're gonna run a deficit for a while, um, until the project turns around, until you meet the, the take rate that, um, that you're gonna need. The, the trick is to try to match your borrowing costs or the amount you borrow with the amount you need, so you're not doing it upfront, and it's, it's a whole process to determine what's gonna be best for you. And that's gonna be determined based on what different financing is available to you, what the structure is, what the interest rates are. Um, but that's a discussion that's gonna have to be had.
But just to confirm, there was no funds coming from what I'll call the municipal side of South Hadley or any of the other communities?
No, we were, we were on our own, and it's probably gonna be different from you.
So how does a, how does a, well, South Hadley has a municipal power and light company, but Long Meadow that doesn't have one?
That's right.
How does the town of Long Meadow go out and sell bonds from a, some, we have no history of municipal light and power company being able to repay the bonds, and, and have, you know...
The simple fact is that the town's gonna have to guarantee the debt of the municipal light department, and it's probably gonna be backed by the taxpayers.
And that's generally what happens in, uh, communities that don't have electric light plants, is they, they bond and you see a, a property tax increase. Uh, usually, it's a 20-year bond.
So, so just so you know, Long Meadow doesn't have room in its property tax base to do that, unless it's, unless we exclude it from Prop 2.5. We're at the, pretty much at the top of, of the Prop 2.5. That's part of, well, we've gotta work our way around.
That's right.
And I, and I support the program, I'm trying to find ways around.
There's one alternative that, once you become a municipal light plant, and if you do your votes in accordance with the statute laws, you can become a joint action agency member, hopefully, we're exploring that right now. And there's a way to borrow funds through, the way we borrowed funds, through Mass Municipal Wholesale Electric Company, EMWIC. We borrowed our money through their pooled financing. And that's one way for the municipal light plant to borrow. It, it is a daunting task, but the, if you get to a certain amount of customers, which Mike is gonna show you in a minute, you'll make enough revenue to meet your obligations, your debt service. And we did the same. Within two years, we achieved enough to meet our monthly obligations.
Two to three years, we were profitable, and year four, we were cash flow positive.
You know, yeah, to be cash flow positive in four years is, is fast. Um, it won't likely happen as fast, only because, you know, we had some advantages being the municipal light plant. However, it can happen within a reasonable period of time, and you can make enough revenue to meet your obligations. And if you're borrowing that money, you know, and, and again, I don't know how you're gonna borrow, but there are, there are some options that we've talked about.
Have any of the municipalities looked for their residents to basically pay an upfront cost? Like, I'll pay the $3,000 to bring it to my home. More people in the fiber hood than say, I'll pay the upfront cost? I thought that is a tax deduction in year one?
I, I think many communities have, uh, decided just to, to vote, to tax their, their residents, and it was a vote, they put it out to vote, right, and they approved to increase their taxes by a certain amount to get fiber.
Cause ultimately, it is like water and sewer, right? It's a, it's a public service, I mean.
Well, it's a little different because some people might not want it. So they might say, it's not fair to tax me or something, I'm not gonna bail myself off. Did you have any, when you had these experiences with votes in other towns, can you share a little bit about how those went?
You wanna talk about someone else?
So in Shootsberry, the MLP decided to offer a subsidy for new customers. They would actually put $500 towards the construction cost for the new connection to be brought to the house. So, if you were signing up for service and there was an estimate to bring service to your house, let's say it was $800, the MLP would kick in 500, and you would pay the balance.
So you're saying that the individual residences had to pay for it to be hooked up, and it wasn't just a collective taxation of the town as a whole?
That was their choice.
That was their choice.
That was their choice.
Their town next door, Leverett.
Imagine that as a deterrent.
The town next door, Leverett, they just bonded for 20 years, everybody bought on, and they had 95% take rate.
So there's many different models, and working together actually produces the options and funding to pursue that path.
I think the operative is many different models. And I think we've gotta figure out what, what works for the town of Long Meadow.
That's right, the, the good news is though, that the models used to fail.
If we had, if we had, you know, a, a dollar on our tax rate of, of space, we might go that route, but we're, you know, Prop 2.5 is a hard cap of $25 tax rate, and we're pretty darn close to it.
The one thing, just to share with you, is that in every community across the United States, almost every time, the one thing they do vote for is fiber. So if you put this out to vote, I, I would be shocked if it didn't pass. You know, you saw the, the approval for the MLP, but, um, it can happen, it cannot pass, and so the majority do pass it. And then you have to decide how you wanna finance it, there are options, we can assist, um, but these are choices that are gonna have to be made.
Beneath it, go ahead. I, I think, from what I'm hearing, I think we need the assistance of an experienced group like Sheldon to, to come back and say, here are potential options for financing it, for coming, you know, and I don't, you know, rather than just say, yeah, we're gonna go do this, come up with, you know, we're gonna go do it, and here's the path we're gonna take, because otherwise, we can, you know, we're not gonna do a very good job of inventing the wheel ourselves if everybody else's 12 or 25 communities have come up with all the options for doing it.
Yeah, and I think I...
Can we send a task force to do that?
Well, so, so I think the task force's thinking behind this was this initial ask of $400,000 um, for design and engineering, that will inform the, a lot of the financial decisions that we're gonna be making, and also, that $400,000 is also, uh, towards poll applications. Now, poll applications are, you know, they, it's a very long process to have the poll applications, and then once the poll applications go through, the build-out actually kind of comes quickly. So, our thinking was, let's put in the poll applications, get that process started, let's do the design and engineering, and then, you know, we can take a look, work with Mike, their CFO, and, you know, be able to present the town with options of how to finance, finance this and move forward.
Okay. Um, and just brief, I mean, notable achievements were eligible carrier designation from the Mass Department of Telecommunications Cable, national recognition of fiber network operator certification from the Broadband Association. We've built out all public areas of South Hadley under budget and ahead of schedule, and we have a take rate of 50% in five years. And just a caveat to that, almost every fiber project we see is achieving a 50% take rate. So that tells you, and it's just going up. These are just testimonials from Leverett and Shootsberry, I won't read them, but they're very positive. And if I could scroll to the next one, that's the chair of, uh, Leverett, and this is the actual MLP manager of Shootsberry, Gail Huntress, she is very thorough. If you wanna talk to somebody about these hard choices, she's a great person to talk to. And I think, is there one more? And this is a summary, you know, we have a strong reputation of reliability and redundancy, 80 years of combined knowledge from experienced telecommunication people, strong understanding of MLP rules, regulations, extensive poll application experience, uh, fiber to the premise from beginning to end, total solution, strong project management experience, 25-plus years of fiber industry experience. And that's it, and we have a financial presentation.
Can I just, what's the legal, uh, status of Fiber Shield? Is it a wholly, a separate corporation from, you know, South Hadley Electric?
No, it's not.
It's just like an operating division of South Hadley Electric?
Yeah, it's a service.
It's a brand.
It's just a brand, so...
Within, within South Hadley Electric?
Yeah, South Hadley Electric, the customers, the, the ratepayers of South Hadley Electric own South Hadley Electric. Everything we do for fiber is part of that. There's no, it's not a separate company, it's all part of South Hadley Electric.
Yeah, and I did just wanna say too, I guess, kind of talking about how this would be financed and the options available, you know, we met with a lot of different vendors, and one of the reasons why we recommended Fiber Spring is their breadth of experience. So, you know, we've got folks who used to work at Whip City. We've got, I think Bobby came from Chicopee, Crossroads Fiber, and obviously, the partnership with Holyoke Gas and Electric. You talk to these other vendors, they tell you, oh, this is the one way you finance. This is the one way you do this, this is the one way you do that. And I think these folks, they give you the good, the bad and the ugly, and we really appreciated that, that they were upfront with us. Even some of these costs on, um, you know, the spreadsheet that they outline. Other vendors didn't even tell us about those costs. Um, and so, we feel comfortable that they're going to be able to advise us to make, you know, the best decision that we can for the town.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we've taken a conservative approach, Mike here's gonna talk about it, and so... No, you have to talk about the bad and the ugly.
No, I get to talk about the bad and the ugly. This is just based on kind of best information available to us now. It looks like, and we tried to do it based on take rates because costs scale up. So the various construction costs, I mean, we broke it down into three phases, engineering and design, make-ready, and the cost construct. Engineering and design is really what we're talking about now. We'll pull applications, getting a drawing of the plant, what it's going to look like, understanding the actual measurements, the actual footage to be deployed, the actual materials needed. That'll help us hone in on what the true cost of construction's going to be. And you can see that cost jumps up with the take rate. And the reason it jumps up is we're adding more residential and commercial services. That then leads down, under the assumption that you did 100% borrowing at a 4 and 1/4 rate over 30 years with semi-annual payments, you're looking at what your annual debt service would be. And if you want to flip over to the next one, please. This then kind of gives you a little P and L. And what it shows you is that a 30% take rate, you're not making money. At a 40%, you'd probably break even. If you get to 50 or 60, you now have enough money to make this project work. And when you say 50% seems to be where everybody's at. Again, these numbers are estimates based on what we know now. You know, again, as we get the actual drawings, those numbers will change. As we get make-ready class from Eversource, those numbers will then be updated. The construction, the actual labor and materials that go into the build, we'll get that from a competitive bidding process. And a borrowing class will be based on what we're able to get from the various financing sources. There may be one, it may be several. You know, again, we'll have to see what all our options are and what we can do. Once we get all those numbers, we can put it into a more realistic picture that will actually cash flow out over time, and you'll get a better feel for the financial viability of the project.
I think we heard before that the other towns that you were talking about that bonded to 20-year bonds. This is a 30-year bond, so that would change the financial picture quite a bit.
Yeah, because 20 years, the debt service would be too high.
Yeah, I think we'd probably get a little closer to that.
But you need to remember too, that you're building a plant that's going to be here for decades.
Yeah, this is a, you're basically building a utility, and it's a 50 to 100-year investment. Fiber is infinitely scalable. If, you know, we don't see incumbents investing the money in these territories, especially Western Mass, other than these private entities that are coming into sections and then they leave parts of the sections of the town unconstructed. And the likelihood of them selling that plant is very high, and then you lose your control. So this is about, you know, generational, setting your town up. John can talk about this.
I mentioned Sean earlier that this reminded me, reading about the history of Shell back in 1914, you know, some residents got together and said, "You know, we think it might be a good idea to own electric generating and transmission capability." There was a little private, you know, company. And they decided, and they went to town meeting, and they decided to create the MLP and to buy that little electric generating company. And 100 years later, the position we are in because of that decision, you know, you get caught up in the day-to-day, you know, again, having been on this, like, what are the day-to-day issues you deal with? But then you see something that drastically affects the quality of life in South Hadley. And that was one of our, I was on the board when we decided, on the municipal light board, when we took the vote to move ahead on this project, which for us was a big unknown. You know, we hadn't done this before. But I think it was that sense that we could have a significant impact on the quality of life in South Hadley by giving this kind of service, making the service available to people. And yes, you know, it's got to be financial, financially, you know, feasible, but there's also that sense that 100 years from now, people look back and say, "That was a smart decision those guys made."
Can I talk?
I know we've got a couple futurists in the audience. In 100 years, are we going to say, "What the hell are we doing with fiber? It's all over the air now, or it's implanted in our heads?" I mean, kind of being a little facetious, but if we're taking out a 30-year loan to have this for decades, is this going to be, is this the cutting edge? Or is there something that, I know we looked at this a little bit, over the air just isn't going to work. But is there something else better than fiber that is going to work?
Over the year doesn't work today.
Thirty years from now.
Yeah, not that we know of today. And I've been in the business about 35 years, and I keep hearing about wireless.
Yeah.
And I keep building fiber networks, and I don't go back and replace them.
We just had a town, I won't name the names, but call us that built a wireless network that's not working. And so now they want us to consider helping them build a fiber network after they built the wireless network. And I was told when we were building this, 5G is going to wipe you out. 5G hasn't even come close to touching us. And so when you're in your home and you're watching TV and you're streaming and you see this, you go crazy. And so the static connection of a hardwired fiber plant to the home is king. It's gold. It's just the most fast and reliable, and if you're working from home, you're uploading documents, you don't have lagging, you don't have buffering. So, and if you have the right partners, you can just keep increasing your capacity because the plant itself is infinitely scalable. It's the components you attach to it that you just have to keep upgrading.
Let me bring, two more questions. Does that connect in, like, existing mesh networks? If you have, like, I, a lot of people in Long Meadow have weird homes that have, I know that I have three different networks in my house. Is there any problem with that?
So, right now, the mesh networks, they all work together. It's six hands, quarter footage in a house. What we deploy is the same type of technology, Y-Plexix technology, and if you need a mesh extender, it is added. The mesh extension approach, the technology gets better and better over time. The most secure connection right now is a fiber optic connection. When you get into your house and you don't run wires to have a secure connection, as Sean said, a static connection between two points, you run a mesh network because it creates its own wireless mesh, and that's how that technology works.
But that's all short range.
Yep.
So the whole point of fiber is to get those extended reaches, get through the woods where there's heavy foliage, and basically be, run anywhere to a point, and then that's it. That's the last thing you-
When it goes into my house, I can go nuts.
With whatever you want. Your own stuff, stuff from the provider, whatever.
And we do have customers that have taken the leap to go with the cellular offerings that are out there, and we actually welcome them back.
Yeah, they don't, doesn't work.
Vene, this question may be more for you or for our committee, and that is, one of the requests is that we pursue the pull permits, so that we, because they're the long delivery time. I don't know the exact number, but I think Long Meadow's probably 25 or 30% underground wires. Why wouldn't we start there and see, and get not only subscribers, but get money into the system that will then help us pay for the pull permits? And I hate to say that, whether, you know, those people are going to have to wait a little longer, or do some combination of both, but you don't need a pull permit to put the stuff underground.
Which, that's a great question, and you're correct. We don't need a pull permit to put stuff in the ground, but it's more expensive going underground than aerial.
But you can get cash.
Provided, you know, underground is real easy to talk about, but the conduit's there, but you go there and the conduit might not be there, or it might be plugged, or it might be broken.
But you're right. You're right. You can.
Absolutely.
But it does require financing, and, you know, we could calculate the underground costs.
That's where the design and-
But the fiber hood, you know, you could say, you know, all I'm saying is, don't exclude those neighborhoods that may be underground wiring as early fiber hoods.
I think that will all be uncovered with the design and engineering task.
One of the innovations in the document that you have is that we do look at underground as getting the cost on. So the Select Board has the information.
Well, you know, I'm, as you can tell, I'm really concerned about outlaying $475,000 on our current tax base, knowing, and I support this 100%. I think this is great, but I agree with you. It's going to take a few years till it turns profitable. And I'm not, you know, I'm concerned that the town can support that, that few years if it's a town-based system. On the other hand, we could run it like an independent startup, you know, and just borrow enough money to get us through the few years. You're going to borrow more money, and the payoff is later, but then the town doesn't have to come up with the cash upfront because, like every other town, we're hard-pressed for cash.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's different strategies. I think one reason too why we're pushing the, you know, pull applications is because one of the goals of, that we identified was that we would like for every home in Long Meadow to be able to connect to fiber if they so choose. And so, yeah, underground, we could go ahead and start that, but obviously for the pulls, like, we would just want to, you know, get that process. And also, if someone else puts an application before you, that just makes, takes it even longer and all that. So it's kind of like getting to the pulls first is important.
Pull applications also enable us to, if we so desire in the future, I'm not trying to push this all out, to be our own inter-service provider.
All right, Bobby?
One of the most important parts to answer the other part of your question is to get on the pull before anybody else, because this way, the competitive market is only between a few providers. You do need to have some aerial presence to get to these underground areas. To do the whole town underground is very cost prohibitive. It's super expensive. And the reality of things, you want to have pull presence, you want to have that permanent sooner than later. And for example, in Connecticut, it may take five to six months to have a pull application reviewed. In Massachusetts, it takes two to three years. So what you're looking at is when you're doing the seed money approval, the design and engineering puts together pretty much what we're looking at for materials, fiber servicing areas, which are your fiber hoods, working together with the board to develop the scope, how we're going to walk forward, and that actually leads into a financial model and the decision-making process, which overall defines the timeline and how you move forward and how your numbers get better.
Well put. All right. Anything else? All right. Okay, well, thank you all so much for coming by. We're going to be voting later to adopt the recommendation by the task force, but thank you all so much. And, you know, I think the Fiber Spring folks are going to be at Pride on the September 15th, I believe it is, tabling. So folks in the community that want to talk to Fiber Spring and learn more about them, you know, feel free to stop by their table at Pride.
Great.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yep. All right. 9:21, and we will move into the town managers report.
Hey, just an update on the water system. In the early hours of Sunday, August 27th, a low water level alarm went off at the water tank. While we were determining what was causing the tank level to drop and not simultaneously fill, a non-essential water use restriction was declared. A reverse 911 call was sent out to notify water users. The tank valve was manually opened to allow the tank to fill. Once the tank level increased, another call was able to go out to lift the restriction. After review of the system to determine the cause, it was discovered that the telemetry system was not working correctly, which caused a communication disruption resulting in one of the water valves closing and remaining closed. With the tank not receiving water to replenish the supply and with water being used, the level of the tank fell, causing the town to lose water pressure, resulting in the alarm going off. The root problem was identified as a battery and charging unit that powered the antenna for the telemetry unit at the water tank losing power. This issue clearly exposed a vulnerability in the communication system as there's no redundancy. DPW has engaged an engineer who specializes in these issues, reviewing the tower and both pump stations to design a long-term solution. An update on the August 15th weather event. As most of you know, a section of town experienced a severe weather event on August 15th. Long Meadow Police Fire and DPW assisted with road closures, t-tours, and cleanup. DPW made use of the contracts it has with, it has in place for tree work and had all available staff respond to expeditiously cleared roadways and sidewalks. Although the damage was isolated to a small section of town, it was a notable event with damage to many trees, houses, and other property. Costs are still being calculated. Given that we are at the start of the fiscal year, the budgets in place are able to cover the costs. However, I do want to consider a warrant article to replenish the accounts used by DPW to clean up the debris. I will have more information for the Select Board at your next meeting. A big thank you to the Police, Fire, and DPW staff who assisted with the cleanup, and to Northern Tree who responded quickly. A follow-up regarding the Reynolds Pool chemical complaint. There were public comments made at the August 12th Select Board meeting. I'm providing additional information to dispel any concerns that may have been created by those comments. I'm aware that Mr. Shea was not pleased with my response to his allegations and complaints regarding the storage of pool chemicals at Reynolds Pool in July while construction work was taking place in preparation for the school, the pool reopening. At the time his concern was expressed, it was looked into and further action was not necessary. Mr. Shea's email was acknowledged and responded to. To ensure that residents and the Select Board are confident in the town's handling of the issue, I asked the Fire Department as the hazardous material response agent to analyze the issue. The completed analysis is attached to my report. I do excerpt sections of it though here that I'll just read briefly. The chemicals involved were calcium hypochlorite, a Class 3 oxidizer, sodium bisulfate, a corrosive and cyironic acid. All of these chemicals are routinely used in the operation of swimming pools in public, semi-public, and private applications. Based on information contained in the SDS, all of the chemicals require ventilation and should be kept separate from incompatible products. These projects, these products should not, should also not be exposed to prolonged periods of average-high temperatures over 95 degrees due to accelerated decomposition. They should not be subject to contamination and should remain dry. Due to the products being new and still sealed in their original containers, the risk of water infiltration and contamination is extremely low. With the chemicals having been stored outside for less than 24 hours, the issue of temperature should not present a hazard. The analysis goes on to state that the MAQ for outside storage of a solid Class 3 oxidizer is 40 pounds, which was exceeded in this case. Storage within the building has a much greater MAQ and is allowed. Based on the totality of the circumstances in this case, temporary nature of the storage, weather conditions based on National Weather Service data and the closed facility, it is likely that a greater risk would have been presented by storing the material in an unventilated room with other pool chemicals. And for anyone that wants to read the full analysis done by the Fire Department, it is linked on my report. You may have seen some of the detour signs that have been placed along Long Meadow Street, Williams Street regarding the Barcall Road Bridge closure. Mass DOT is resurfacing the Barcall Road Bridge. Work began the week of August 19th as an expected, and is expected to be completed no later than November 15th. Town officials are going to continue to work with Mass DOT on partial lane reopening as soon as possible. Elementary playgrounds, the installation work for equipment is complete at Center in Blueberry. Work has started at Wolf Swamp. The rubberized surface was installed at Blueberry Hill Elementary and playground, and the playground has been open for students. Playground resurfacing at Center School is being installed and is, was expected to open today. And Wolf Swamp Elementary is expected to be completed within two weeks. Each site has some punch work, work that needs to happen, including loam and seed after all the installation work is done. Community grand opening celebrations are being planned, and details will be shared for all to attend. And just to speak again about what Josh stated during Select Board comments, the Middle School Building Committee met on August 27th and voted on the preferred schematic design and report to be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority. Presentation slide deck for the meeting is linked in my report here. It's available on the School Department website. The Middle School Building Committee voted to recommend Option 8A, a new 665-student Williams Middle School, at the Williams Middle School site with an auditorium. The preferred schematic report is submitted to the MSBA, and the MSBA board is scheduled to vote at the end of October on the town's preferred solution. The project would then enter schematic design phase with a town-wide vote scheduled for the fall of 2025. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments from the board? Josh?
Just a quick one on the water system. I did not, I don't even know if I was in town, but I- but I, I heard from people that the 911 call went out quite a bit after, people had noticed and didn't know what was going on. The 911 call went out much later. Is there any way to automate? Or hopefully this won't happen again, but if something does happen, if the water level gets low, is there a way to automate a call telling folks so we don't, so we don't have to catch it?
Not right now.
But is that, that's something that could be looked at by this engineer?
Potentially, potentially.
I was thinking that morning, when I heard about this as well, the disadvantage of that would be waking people up, but the advantage of that is people might turn off their sprinklers and you have more water in the reserve basically. So I don't know, I don't know if there was a reason. Like I think people got a call around 7:00 AM.
Yeah, 7:00, something.
But it occurred at like 3:00 AM, so.
Yes.
I'm not sure what thinking, I mean, maybe it took a couple hours to figure out what was happening.
Yes, it did.
That's a good point. We'd probably feel a lot more angry people if it happened.
Maybe. Why'd you wake me up?
Uh, anything else?
Yeah, Mark? In my comments earlier tonight, I asked about the, the, the storm cleanup and I, I know you're going to put some numbers together, but I think it'd be useful also to know because we're using, because you said our budget might be able to cover it, but what doesn't get done? Because, you know, what was in our planning that won't get done if, if we use our normal budget to cover the storm cleanup?
Yep. And, um, some of that is also taking the risk that we won't have any other weather events the rest of this fiscal year, which is not likely.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. So let's move on. We've got, uh, moving into old business now, approval of meeting minutes of draft, meeting minutes from June 17th, 2024. Any discussion or motions?
How, how move that we approve the minutes of June 17th, 2024 meeting?
I'll second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right, great.
I mean, can I just ask, we're, we're now two months, two meetings behind, which is unfortunately also two months behind. And, and I know our minutes technically become legal the minute they're, we leave the meeting essentially, but it, you know, what would it take to get us up to, up to date? And I'm not trying to put the pressure on you, Mike. What I'm trying to do is get you somebody else who can do minutes.
July, July is done. I just didn't want to overwhelm anyone for the meeting today because of all the information we had already on the agenda. So July is done. August maybe has maybe like an hour left. So those two are pretty much done. So they should be ready for the September meeting. I don't know if I'll be able to get to this meeting by September 16th, but I'll be caught up by the October 7th meeting, certainly.
Great, great. Anything else? Okay. All right. So now we're moving into the vote on the municipal fiber task force recommendation. And I think why this vote is being presented now is we had this recommendation presented at the last meeting. We met with Fiber Spring today. And what this recommendation does is basically adopt the municipal fiber task force's recommendation. And, uh, by doing that, it just allows the town to begin coordinating with Fiber Spring, to start disseminating information, um, to, you know, inform folks about what they do in advance of town meeting, um, and, and to just kind of, I guess, just position the town as working towards, um, you know, pursuing this partnership with Fiber Spring. Is that, is that well put? Anything to add to that?
Yeah, just, uh, the select board head put the charge to create this municipal fiber task force with the expectation that a report was going to be done, which you did. Now the board needs to accept the report, which in turn accepts the recommendations.
Right.
Who will be, is there any costs associated with this endorsement for, at this point? Or who will be paying for the communication to educate everybody at this point?
No, no, there's, so there's no costs. Yeah, yeah. This will sit with us.
What did, just remind us, what are we voting, what is the town voting on at the fall town meeting?
Yes. So the town is, right now, what the task force has proposed is the, the town vote on three separate articles. So the first article is just the second vote required to create the municipal life plan. Uh, the second article is to, uh, is, is to approve funding, um, to do the poll applications as well as the design and engineering, which is $400,000 total for both of those. Um, and then the third article is to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Fiber Spring.
If any one of those fails, that...
Well, the municipal life plan. If that vote doesn't pass, then the rest, uh, yeah, are null.
But we would need to fund the study in order to, or entering into the intermunicipal agreement wouldn't do much good if we didn't fund the study as well. So we.
Right, yeah.
Really all three would have to.
Yeah, yeah, they're all kind of dependent on each other, yeah.
I don't believe that intermunicipal, intermunicipal agreement needs to go to town meeting.
Oh, sorry.
That's just through you guys.
Yes, sorry, yes. Um, you're exactly right. I think we, we figured that out later was that if those two articles pass a town meeting, then the select board would be presented with an intergovernmental agreement to sign. Yeah, sorry, I missed, I missed the point. That's exactly right. Okay.
Mark? I, I support the, the development of a municipal fiber system in town. I'm concerned about the expenditure of $400,000, given additionally what we heard tonight about there may be a whole bunch of other options for financing it. You know, I, I was very interested that, that Mike had said that, or John had said that, that South Hadley was a separate, you know, maybe because South Hadley Gas and Electric or whatever, electric company, but it's, it's a separate corporation and, and, you know, I understand that with no history, the town of Long Meadow is probably going to have to back these bonds, but there's a difference between the town of Long Meadow backing them and the town of Long Meadow issuing them. And, and, you know, it may be a fine distinction, but it's a, it's a big deal when it comes to our, our tax base. And I don't know how to explore that, frankly, within this context and how we do that between now and, and November. But I think it's important that, that we understand that. You know, we can always say, well, it's only free cash and we can use free cash, but free cash is still the town's money. And, and, you know, without a provision for, you know, whatever entity we set up paying back to town, the town's out $400,000, you know, which is fine, but, but if we create a separate organization, that becomes an investment rather than an expense. An investment in a system that ends up getting paid back out of this utility or municipality organization, whatever it is. So my concern is getting these finalized dotted and Ts crossed in the cash flow of the, of the economics rather than jump for, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea to finalize the MLP and enter to a intermunicipal government agreement. I think that's a great idea. And even pursuing poll permits, if that's the right thing to do, do it. I'm just trying to figure out a better way to finance it than, than, than just use free cash or the town's money.
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, I think that the other part of it, the other $200,000 that would be needed for design and engineering, I think is just critical for us to be able to explore the financing options and, you know, what, what that would look like. And so that's what the task force was thinking and, you know, making that recommendation. Um, but, you know, this is, you know, we'll, we'll get to discuss what's on the warrant and.
Yeah, I, I hear you, but I think, you know, I'm listening to what Andrew said, that there's going to be a percentage of people in town, I don't know if it's 5% or 20%, we're going to say, I'm not using this. Don't spend my money on providing something for other people or I'm happy with comp, you know, whatever it is. And so I, I think it's, I mean, I'm going to be an early, an early adopter. I think it's a great system, you know, but I think we need to come up with something that's self-contained so we can go to the people in Long Meadow saying, the users are paying for this and the residents aren't paying for it. And I, you know, and, and ultimately, does it get rolled in because it's utility? Maybe, but the town of Long Meadow has not been a, in the business of being a utility. Frankly, I'm not sure we're, that's, that's our strong point.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Josh.
Well, I, I would 100% agree with that, except that in theory, this will make money for the town. And it doesn't matter if everyone, we don't need everyone to, to buy in. So if 10% say, I don't care, 20%, 40% we saw, if they say, I don't care about this, it doesn't matter because the 6% who do are also benefiting that 40% because the whole town could make money on this. And that's, I think that that changes the whole, to me, changes the whole thought process here. Um, and we have to, and, you know, I know we're all concerned with the budget here and at 100%. Um, but we have to, I think that this, because there is an end goal in mind, I think it's important to spend this money and not, uh, and then explore our financing options, but we at least have to put in this investment.
I think that's a very good point. Everyone will benefit if this turns out to be a win for the town. I think you make a good point as well, Mark, but I also, I also am kind of, I, there is always some benefit in, in spending the money that you have and not borrowing more money. I'm, I'm very kind of aware that like our debt service is a significant part of our budget. I think we have a select board policy that it should not be more than 10%. I think Ian once told me of our budget and we're there or not, or right over that. So, you know, there's some benefit to just not borrowing when it's at a relatively high interest rate still.
Were there ever examples, I don't even know if this is possible, but where the MLP has paid back the municipality for those startup costs, once it was making money?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, that, we can choose to do that if we want. Um, I, I can't think of a specific example.
Yeah, I was going to ask, kind of at Lynn's point, I'm willing to do the work and there's a bunch of municipalities that have done this and see what, see what more information I can find out about financing vehicles that might make this work more comfortable. I understand you, I understand you mean to have enough information. I appreciate that. And at the task force, it's our job to find that information that you don't have and present it.
Yep.
I, I, I would, I would suggest, or I would support the fact that we don't say, oh, you want fiber in your house, you'll pay $5,000. That's, they tried that in Wilbraham and did not work at all. And, and frankly, you know, if, if I say yes and I pay it, you know, my neighbor's going to say, oh, well, as long as he's got the wire running down, down the street, you know, I'll, I'll just connect my house for 50 bucks or, you know, so I, I wouldn't, I don't think that's the way we want to go.
I don't know if anyone has ever done it. That was my question.
I know Wilbraham tried, I, I was at a meeting with Wilbraham where they said they were actually trying to assess people for, and, and they got very, very, very locatary to the point where they abandoned the project.
Yeah, and I think Lynn's, I mean, the theory I did make sense.
I don't know if it's possible, but.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, great.
Something to explore, yeah. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
When we were in Westfield, they told us that they were doing several payment in lieu, payment in lieu of tax programs where they were, they were using their MLP money to support projects in the town in lieu of them paying the town for the revenue.
That would.
So I, so I think that's what they're doing in Westfield. They were paying some of that money back.
You love pilot programs.
That would make sense though. That, that is a workaround of about what I'm saying. Yeah. Huh.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's great.
Yeah, I do. I love that.
Uh, well, I'll make a motion that we, we accept the recommendation, that we accept the report of the fiber task force and, and move forward with implementing the recommendations.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you all for your work. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Don't go anywhere. Not tonight, but in general. We can go tonight.
All right. Uh, now moving on to new business. Um, so the first item under new business is an open meeting law complaint that was filed by a town resident, Richard Foster. And this was concerning the discussion that took place in our August 12th meeting around Mr. Benton's nomination to the Board of Registars. So, uh, the complaint is attached to the agenda, um, as well as town council's response to the complaint. Um, and I, I think that, um, you know, I, I just kind of want to, oh, well, I guess I should say that what the select board is being asked to do tonight is to discuss the complaint and decide and vote whether a open meeting law violation occurred or not. So that's what is in front of us tonight. Um, so I want to kind of, I guess, just walk through what this open meeting law complaint was and, and, you know, kind of what transpired. So a few days after our August 12th meeting, uh, I think everybody on the select board received an email from Mr. Foster alleging that an open meeting law violation occurred. Um, I responded to Mr. Foster and explained to him open meeting laws and the statutes and how, uh, this, you know, did not come anywhere close to a violation of the open meeting law, which was reinforced by our town council's, uh, you know, response that they, that they ended up providing last Friday. Uh, Mr. Foster responded to my email by saying, thank you for the illuminating response. And I did not hear anything else from him. A few days after that, he went and filed this complaint, um, with the Attorney General's office. Now, you know, I, I realize that open meeting laws are complicated and difficult to understand, but I think that it is unfortunate here that instead of trying to better understand open meeting laws, that Mr. Foster just went ahead and filed this complaint, because all this has really resulted in is just the waste of taxpayer dollars that we had to spend on our attorneys and also a waste in, you know, the time, the town's time and energy and resources in having to respond to this complaint. Uh, because, you know, as, as the town council's response makes clear, right, the way that this was handled at our select board meeting was done in compliance with state statute and also with case law. Uh, and, and, and in fact, case law actually flat out says that when we are discussing nominations, that this should be done in open session. Um, and, you know, I, we had a lot of folks come here tonight and make resident comments and, you know, there have been articles written about this. And I just want to, I guess, kind of go over the facts again of what happened at that meeting. The nature of the statements that Mr. Benton made, they were not made in a private conversation. They weren't made in private correspondence. They weren't even made just to his Facebook friends, right? These statements were published publicly for the whole world to read. Anyone who has a Facebook account or can Google could have read these. And also it does not appear that these statements were made, um, you know, in service of a project or in response to any question. These were just statements that Mr. Benton wanted the world to know about how he felt about these certain issues. So when we hear things like these statements were being taken out of context, what Mr. Zorko did was he just read the, read the statements as they were intended to be read as standalone statements. So that line of argument doesn't really, you know, hold much water with me. Um, and the other thing that I want to, you know, address is some of these comments too about how the select board acted in a partisan manner. What I also want to remind folks is that at the August 12th meeting, that we had a Democratic nominee before the select board. There was a Democratic nominee that was before the select board that we already, that we could have just voted on right there, but we took the extraordinary step of bypassing that nominee and asking the Republican Town Committee to send us a new name. Um, and I, I believe that this board took that action because the five of us, uh, this body, we believe in the non-partisan nature of the select board and we also believe, uh, in town precedent and following town precedent. So I, I want to reiterate that I am proud of the way that the select board handled, uh, you know, that, that decision. And just to kind of zoom out for a second, um, this episode to me was an example of the hyper-partisanship infecting our country right now, where people feel the need to defend and excuse abhorrent statements just because somebody of the same political affiliation made those statements. And I think if we can learn anything from this, it's that we will be so much better off when we can speak with moral clarity and we can say that right is right and wrong is wrong despite who made that statement, you know, based on their political party. Um, and I hope that, you know, if anything, that's something that we can learn from, from this whole episode. So those are my thoughts on that. And, you know, obviously welcome anyone else's thoughts. Mark?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to speak to the issue because I, I agree with you. I mean, I want to speak to the, what's before us, which is the open meeting law complaint. I've, frankly, I was very surprised when I opened up our packet and saw that our town council. and saw that our town council reacted to this open meeting law complaint. Frankly, open meeting law complaints, as far as I understand, go from the complainant to the State Attorney General's office, somebody in Worcester who deals with open meeting laws. And they will tell us whether it's an open meeting law complaint or not, despite what we may think, despite what our town attorney may think. So, you say that the select board needs to respond. I don't feel the need to respond. The Attorney General's office is gonna tell us whether it's an open meeting law complaint.
So, yeah, so we looked, we looked into this procedure of how this works. So, once an open meeting law complaint is filed, it comes to the select board, we vote on whether there's a violation or not. If we vote that there was a violation, then we need to enact remedial measures. If we decide that there was not a violation, then that kind of ends it right there and then the complainant has an opportunity to appeal our decision to the Attorney General's office.
But isn't that filed with the Attorney General's office?
Either way, a copy has to go to the Attorney General's office.
I, I understand that, but in the past, the select board's never dealt with them because they've gone to the Attorney General's office who tells us, "You now need to accept it or remediate it or forget about this, it's not going anywhere because it's not really a violation," which is what mostly happened. But the select board's never had to respond before because my understanding is, no matter what we do, this Attorney General's office is obligated to respond to this, to this complaint.
I, I think that's correct, but the procedure is on, it's the second item on the agenda under here.
Public body must meet with it, must meet to review the complaint within 14 days after review, but within 14 days, the public body must respond to the complaint in writing and must send the complaint a response and a description of any action the public body has taken to address it. It goes on, it goes on to say the public body may delegate the responsibility to counsel the staff member to review the complaint.
Anything else?
No, just, I, I guess I have a procedural question, because, um, obviously, this is, this is going to the Attorney General, as Mark said, and we want to make sure that we are doing everything correctly by letter of the law. And we must send, we have to respond to the complainant and describe our, with a response and description of any action. We must send the Attorney General a copy of the response. We may delegate this, the responsibility to the council, but only if there's meant to review the complaint. And, and that's what I want to make sure that we are not running afoul of anything because council has responded, and I guess we can adopt that response if we wanted. But that was done before we reviewed. And is, is there any, that's what I, I want to make sure we're doing this correctly.
Sure, so, when we received the complaint, we, Town Council had already been apprised of this complaint before it was formally filed, just to verify the process that had happened at the last meeting. And in receiving the complaint, we forwarded it off to Town Council. It is completely up to this body whether or not you adopt it or not. But their review of what transpired, they watched the meeting and then they read the complaint. This was their opinion and it's up to the board if they want to adopt this letter and use this as a response.
Does the, the timing, the order of what happened here, will that, will that matter?
That was not raised by Town Council in their review.
I think I would only add, you know, I, I don't think this was an open meeting violation. And I think that Mr. Benton's comments that were read, I don't think any of us really agree with. But I, I would only add that I was saddened that there was such a kind of a public disparagement of a fellow citizen. I think that, you know, we should have a very, we're a small town. We should have a very high threshold for ever directly disparaging one of our neighbors. You know, I, I don't think Mr. Benton's a bad person, I'm acquainted with him. I think he has done a lot of good things in town. But I don't think that, you know, any of us would agree with the things that he put forth. So I just want to speak out for, you know, the discourse and there may have been other ways or a different tenor could have been taken and achieved the same result. Even though it's not an open meeting violation, to not have chosen to do such a thing in executive session, it could have been done in such a way and perhaps been a lot less inflammatory.
No, yeah, I, I appreciate that, Andrew, and I, you know, I would just, I guess, point back to Town Council's response where they cite case law saying that, you know, discussion of nominations should be held in open session. And so, and then, you know, and, and I also understand, you know, Mr. Benton, some of his friends came today and, and talked about how, you know, the toll that this has had on him and, and you remarked that as well. And I will just say that I didn't see Dan, what Dan said that night as that. Dan was just reading statements that Mr. Benton had made. Dan didn't disparage his character, he didn't say anything personally about Mr. Benton. He just read statements and allowed us, you know, the opportunity to make of those statements of, you know, what we want. And so that's, that's, you know, how I took it.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say a couple of things. And very, being very well said, and kind of kicking things off. You know, I've, I've made a couple of comments on this already, verbatim to the, the paper when they reached out. And all that I'm going to comment about is the simple fact that, that when we make nominee, when we, when people want to sit in front of us to be appointed to a, a board or a committee, as a select board member, that is probably one of the most important decisions that we make on a regular basis. We saw the response from council, there was nothing that was wrong here from the board's part. And people hold select board members to a standard that they expect us to, to do our homework on every single issue. And appointments on the issue of having open and free elections, that, I take that very seriously. Every, every appointment that we make on this body, especially Board of Registars that is overseeing our elections, there aren't many appointments that are nearly as important, in my opinion, that select boards make. And to Vinit's point, we even said to the Republican Party, "In the town of Long Meadow, we view that there's two Democratic appointees previously. This year it's gonna be two Republicans." So we all agreed, I believe we even voted on it, to go back and come in front of this board for an appointment. Again, we are doing our homework on every single issue that comes in front of us and that is simply what I was doing. I was doing my homework for an appointment that oversees our elections in an open meeting. And this is what we've always done in the Commonwealth, what we've done in Long Meadow, and nothing was wrong. I'm sorry that some people didn't appreciate that, but those are the facts. And we watched the video and that's an appointment that's made, we make several appointments. And we should be crediting select board members for going above and beyond and actually putting in the effort that we're elected to do and doing our homework to make sure that people that want to sit on boards and represent the town, that they're representing the town in a way that is respectful to our neighbors and all individuals across our town. And, and that is exactly what I did and I take this very seriously to put in the, the extra work and homework to make sure that we are appointing people that have the values that, that we should share in Long Meadow that is respectful to all of our neighbors. So, Vinit, I appreciate you kicking things off and I just want to, in closing, I, I just want to say over the past couple of weeks with, you know, a lot of the unfortunate attacks that were coming my way, I, I just want to say thank you to a couple select board members that have been very supportive. Josh has been supportive, you've reached out to me and I appreciate that as well as you, Vinit. And also the, the townspeople, I can't tell you, Saturday morning, my phone was off the hook. You know, what happened, what happened? And, and I had a lot of outpouring support. And I just want to thank the community for standing up for the, the board as well as myself, you know, during a time which, you know, I, I was being wrongfully attacked and I was just doing my job, doing, doing the homework that is necessary to make the right decisions for the overall community. So, with that said, thank you.
Anything else?
I was just gonna say, I just read that language again, just to verify. And it says, "While the public body may delegate responsibility for responding to complaints to Town Council or another individual, it must meet first to do so." And I think what's important in that is that what you have in front of you is a draft, you can choose to adopt or not. At that point, it would be sent out, it would be delegated to send the response. So I think that's the distinction.
So I, I would move that we find that there was not an open meeting law violation and we delegate the responsibility of drafting a response letter to Town Council regarding, following our, our meeting tonight.
Second, any further discussion? Go ahead, Mark.
What happens if the Attorney General doesn't agree? They just don't, I mean, it, it just.
They'll let us know.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't impact our decision on what we think, essentially. And they get, I assume, they get an independent, I mean, it sounds like our attorney knows what he's talking about. I'm not gonna, you know, I mean, I, my tendency is to accept our, our attorney's position, but in, in general, the Attorney General's office can do, do whatever they want to do, I guess.
Yeah, and we could, we could say, "Yeah, there was an open meeting law violation and we're going to get retraining on it." And then the Attorney General, well, the Attorney General then, I don't think, would review that decision because there would be no disagreement by the complainant. But from, I, I, I don't think we should find an open meeting by, we should not say there was an open meeting law violation in order to bypass review. I mean, yeah, if, if it was found that there was an open meeting law violation, just based on the wording of the statute, I'd be very surprised. But I, I don't think we should vote for it, just, just in case.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I stand by the way that the meeting was handled and, and, you know, like I said, state statute and case law both support the way that it was handled. So I, if the Attorney General's office wants to say that there was a violation, then we'll deal with that then, but right now, I, I feel comfortable with the board's position. All right, so, any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, next up is the ratification of the DPW collective bargaining agreement. Lynn, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. So, the Long Meadow Association of Municipal Employees is the DPW union. This is covering the contract of June, July of 2022 through June of 2025. In that contract, there was a wage reopeners as a result of the implementation of the wage and classification study. We have been in negotiations with that union since April and I am pleased to say that we have a memorandum of understanding now. And the quick summary of it is, it represents a 2.5% COLA increase for fiscal year '24. So that's the year we've already closed out. And then effective July 1st of 2024, so that's fiscal year '25. We have a new salary scale and that would be adopted with the ratification of this tonight. And then employees would receive that retroactive COLA for FY '24 and then be placed on the new wage scale as of July 1st.
Great. Something to say?
No.
Just gonna move, just gonna move.
All right, go ahead.
I would move that we, is it ratified, the word, the word? Or we tell you to ratify?
No, that you, you would, you ratify the memorandum of understanding.
I would move that we ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Long Meadow Association of Municipal Employees.
Second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Thank you, Lynn, that's important.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next up are some one-day liquor licenses. So, does anybody have any comments or discussion on this?
Is there, is there a limit or is it, it's a limit per year?
Per year.
Okay, so a limit per year and it's a lot, it's like 48.
Okay.
I looked into it, Josh, it's like one, it's just short of one a week and this is.
Well, I, I think, I think also, last year, Tom looked it up and told us about it.
I figured somebody would know the answer to that. I'll move that we approve the one-day liquor licenses for the LACCF for November, sorry, September 5th, 2024, September 12th, 2024, and September 26th, 2024.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, and then we also have a one-day liquor license application from One Way Brewing for the Long Meadow Pride Festival.
I'll move that we approve the one-day liquor license for One Way Brewing for operation at the Long Meadow Pride Festival on Sunday, September 15th.
Second, any further discussion? Go ahead, Mark.
I just want to verify the location, there wasn't a map that I saw with this, maybe there was, but I didn't see it.
I believe this time it was actually attached.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's the same location.
It's the same location.
So it's not on town property?
No.
Yeah, same locations last couple of years, right?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, all those in favor? All those, all right, good. And then a street closure application from the Long Meadow Pride Festival is next up.
I'm going to approve the street closure application for the Long Meadow Pride Festival for, from inner Long Meadow Street, or on inner Long Meadow Street from Williams to Longfellow on September 15th from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, great, and then, anyone have any comments on correspondence? Mark, I can see you're thinking about it.
You're right, but I'm gonna hold it, move the time.
All right, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you, everybody, thank you all.
Thank you.